Good evening, everyone. It is now 6:00 p.m. on March 20th, 2023. Please rise and join me for pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is now 6:00 p.m. on March 20th, 2023. Please rise and join me for pledge of allegiance.
For the United States of America, in whose name we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Every time this happens, it reminds me of a movie show. We're talking about boys, the boy and the announcer, and they would all be like...
That YouTube live.
Thank you, God. Now, Peggy, would you please call the rules?
Councilmember Frank Bankard.
Present.
Councilmember Belinda Livingston.
Present.
Councilmember Leslie Notaro.
Present.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jody Shirley.
Here.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
City Manager Kyle Reeffler.
Here.
City Attorney Randy Mora.
Present.
And Councilmember Mike Thabel was unable to attend.
Thank you, Peggy. We'll just move right on to item number one, which is a discussion of the Citizens Advisory Committee's recommendation for the Stormwater Project bond issue, which was placed on the agenda by City Manager Reeffler. Thank you, Ben.
So I'm happy to be bringing this to the meeting tonight, Citizens Advisory Committee, that we're now at for months now, primarily the Chair Ron Tanik, and we have ended well, Heather, our financial consultant, and been putting numbers together and working with some small banks, and Chris Rowe, who kind of organized the financials of the loan that we're going to talk about tonight. I'm going to start off by talking about this first page. This is a spreadsheet. It's going to unfold. Hopefully, you'll be able to see the numbers on there. I'm trying to make them big enough. And if you go to the top, start on the left, the projects, you'll see this is the next five years of... Well, I should say, two of the years we're on the second year here, but it's the five Stormwater projects that are remaining in master plan. And if you look, it talks about the project which streets it's on, says the year that it was funded. So right now, we're funded up to 17th and 18th, 19th, 20th, and 9th Stormwater projects. There leaves the remaining, starting the next five years, 22nd, 23rd, the following, 25th, and then fiscal year 25th, 26th, would be 14th through 16th. It breaks down, as you can see, it has the BNP, and it has the 2022 estimated cost of the projects. The profits have gone up with the estimated cost because we found out with the 12th and 13th Street project that it came out a little higher than estimated. So there's... You can see notes all the way around the right, assumptions notes. And it talks about increased budget by 30% fiscal year 22, 23. So all these numbers over here, they have 2022 estimated cost. That is a multiplier of 1.3 times the last estimated cost, which was done in 2019. So if you follow the budget for BNP, again, if you get up to this year, fiscal year 22, 23, we're budgeted, you know, for the 17th, 18th, 19th, 20th, and 9th Street project. We have money that's on a savings plan that was projected for the next three projects, but we don't have it in the budget yet. The resurfacing portion of projects. BNP is the actual stormwater, you know, digging up, changing amlets, replacing pipe. From our master plan, the engineer recommended. The resurfacing portion, the next one over, is the coinciding streets to be resurfaced while the project's taking place. So it lists per project, the streets in the area. What it tries to do is our street index. You'll see just below that, where it says Condition Under One Scale, and ranked, you know, by total score of 100. The worst streets is obviously the red 020. And I tried to color code those without having the index in front of us, the street listing with how the condition it's actually in. So you'll see that a lot of these streets that coincide with the projects are, you know, colored from red to yellow, which is, you know, pretty much the worst streets that are remaining in the city. All these projects, the streets that are incorporated with them, will take us to resurfacing. All the streets on the index that are up to, like, the yellow condition. The next one on the index is a green condition, which is fairly new, is in good shape, for scale. So the resurfacing section is calculated. Now, I ran through a calculator that has been very accurate, which I created about three years ago, and it's been holding true to the estimated cost of what the resurfacing would cost as part of the project. So what I did is I calculated out the streets that are remaining to be resurfaced and did an estimated resurfacing cost for each one of those project years. And then same thing for curbs. When we resurfaced the streets, we also changed out the valley curve, and I ran the numbers on estimations for the curve for those projects. It brings us all the way over to the total budget, which kind of lays out everything with the accumulated reserves and the total project. So total project shortfall. And that's basically because even now, when we look at, like, 17th, 18th, 19th, 20th, and 9th Street, the resurfacing cost of the project, we actually do not have the total budget for. So some of these are already falling short. And you'll also notice that the 17th and 18th project, that was saved for 336 before we increased the estimated budget on each of the projects. So we're a little bit short there as well. So what we did is ran all these numbers. So this is the total cost, which I broke down on the bottom here. You'll see, you know, stormwater portion, the resurfacing portion, the curb portion. And that gives you the total project cost minus what's already accumulated in the budget. So it shows our current deficit. The total project is about 2.8 million. And on the bottom here, the other table, laid it out per fund. So Stormwater Projects and the Valley Curve is part of the Stormwater Fund. The street resurfacing is actually part of the Capital Project Fund, just to show the fund breakdown. What's important to know here is that we still have the art of money, which was injected into the Stormwater Fund, but it was brought up earlier. It's already clear that when we talked about doing the underground project, we talked about, you know, that money could make up that deficit that we had in the underground project. So if that's how we applied it, I just want to make a note that I said the reserves to the Cap... Reserves to Capital Project Fund for undergrounding project will show in the CPI projections. And that's the next couple pages that Heather put together. But just the money is in the Stormwater Fund. But just to be clear, if we're saying that money is going to the remainder of the underground project, then that 802,000 will be transferred from the... From reserves to cover that part of the cost. But either way, that money will be spent. And in this case, it'll be technically spent in reimbursement to Stormwater, but the budget all balances, is what I'm trying to say. So just want to make that clear. And then if you go to the next couple pages, this is the projections that Heather ran for us. She kind of just broke down on the front here, sort of a hidden table, which shows the amounts in the Stormwater Fund versus the Capital Project Fund of our proposed loan that we're looking to acquire. And then this is probably the first, we've come, definitely in the most recent years, of laying out a projection of where we're going. And the general fund product projections, if you look at the top, it shows us the, pretty much the reserves that's sitting there outside of the budget that we have accumulated. We broke it down into some separate buckets to show... You have the unassigned, which is money that is just, you know, we've accumulated, it's in accounts, it's collecting interest, but it is not assigned into anything in the budget. So it's completely outside of the budget. The assigned capital projects, we wanted to show what, per the last budget, what we allocated for future capital projects. And that's what that represents. Assigned for transfers, that is, you know, what we have to transfer into another fund that current year. And then the 20% charter requirement, that we just wanted to illustrate the number per charter, that is 20% of the operating expenses of the city. And then through these projections, you'll also see that we've kept the hurricane preparedness per resolution at $1 million. So that's actually, that's not included in the unassigned reserves. That is separate in these projections. And then you'll see, this is the general fund. It's important to note that due to the undergrounding project, you'll see our... If you look at this current year, we came up quite a bit, and we're at about $4 million. We jumped, we fall back down a little bit because of the injection into the undergrounding project. But then you'll see after that, our unassigned funds continue to grow. And a lot of this was done in a very conservative manner where you only predicted 1% growth in revenues. You can kind of see in the various, all the percentages of what she projected and the expenses. She did about 3% across the board, except for personnel, at least the 5%. But using these projections, you can see that we're pretty financially healthy as a city. I'm going to let Chair President Ron Tanik go into the loan numbers a little bit.
Great, thanks, Kyle. And just to back up, this all started when we were tasked back in October to see if we could do something with the $1 million hurricane reserve. Just to let you know, when we talked to the banks, the banks wanted a 1.5% fee to put a $500,000 line together, get a 1.5% annual renewal fee. And the legal was about 12 grand. And so it just, it did make sense to touch that cash. And since part of the spirit was, we could take that, maybe a half a billion dollars of that cash, and it accelerates some of these stormwater projects. So we talked with the bank. I asked where it's at today. This is back in October, and they're like 4.5%. And so we started working on this idea. And today, what I'll present to you is we've got two proposals from... One from Valley Bank and one from South State. So South State is done the last two bond issues for the city, the one for the Bellevue Estates undergrounding and the one for the stormwater project. And I'll... I retired from Valley. So Valley did not have a municipal division when I worked there, but they do now. And so just so I give you that disclosure, I don't work for them, I don't get paid by them. But I honestly think the South State is a better deal, as you're looking. So there's an analysis that I prepared. It's called Cedar Bellar Beach Cap Bond Comparison that you should have, where I side by side put the two loans. So from what Kyle had talked about, we're looking at a little over $2.1 million shortfall in funding. And so these are a 10-year facility. South State is at 4.36%, Valley's at 4.5%. They both have no prepay as long as it's paid off through cash flow. South State would have a 1% prepayment penalty. This was kind of been important to me because of the existing prepayment penalty by this particular facility, the 2006 bond issue. We did look at potentially to roll the balance of this a little bit and just consolidate everything. But Chris Rowe, who's our bond counsel, noted that we would lose the tax-free status if we refinance an already financed tax-free loan. So that's why we've got three years left to pay this that is detailed in the budget that Heather did. And so this is just strictly for the stormwater and the curbing and the roads resurfacing. Legal fees was a pretty big difference. South State was the 3,000 versus 7,500. An anti-dilution test, that is basically a debt service coverage ratio. And we have that on the existing Truist loan of 1.25x. And if you want to skip to almost the back of this presentation, there is that anti-dilution test that was prepared by Chris Rowe. We test out at four times, 4.03%. So what does that mean? That means... And so what we are pledging is our non-advalore revenue. It's not advalore, it's the non-advalore revenue. So we generated last year almost $2.8 billion in non-advalore revenue. And so when you take our 445,000 in debt service, that's four times. So we're very strong to give some perspective. At the interest rates we're talking, the city can borrow 11.5 billion, still be here, just to give you some scope. What was interesting is the banks sort of throw out deposit requirements. I failed to change my sheet. The deposit required by South State was initially $500,000. After the Citizens Advisory Council got together, the term sheet that you have, I requested them to lower to 250,000, which they agreed to do. The good news is we can put that in the deposit account. We could take a hurricane fund or just any kind of money that is in the reserves and can get there for it. There's no branch nearby. The closest branch is Dene. And so for a day-to-day operating, it doesn't make any sense. But if you, you'll see the deposit rates that they're paying, it's the opposite of the deposit rates versus the loan rates. So South State's at 408. And what they pay is effective Fed funds. So the effective Fed funds today is 4.58 minus 50 basis points. So 408 is what they pay. Valley is paying target Fed funds, which is 475 minus 50. So Valley's paying four a quarter. And just so you know, in March, we were about banks this last week. In the state of Florida, banks are required to collateralize these deposits. Public funds are required to be collateralized. So they're superstate unless it's bad with the bank. And both of these banks are very conservative. So the interesting point is, we could put a load with South State, move the deposit relationship from Truist to Valley. And basically, if the Fed raises rates, I have a point, or a quarter point this week, we're going to be earning an interest on our deposits, which are almost 10 times what we're borrowing, equal the interest rate to what we're paying. Just for that perspective. And it's the other cost of the bonds, so the interest expense. If you ran into the charity and the label fees, and then the final bond amount. So what we projected was the $2,733,354. And we had bond counsel fees. The, you know, part of issuing a bond is that we are required, and our city attorney from his department would provide that legal opinion. And so that legal opinion fee is what was calculated in the original contract that we have, and the bank legal fee. So you get the total that your bond needed to fund the closings, $2,107,479 or $2,117,99. The real difference is the bank's legal fees in that. So what does this do for the Cedar Bellar Beach? First of all, the residents benefit from getting their stormwater water projects accelerated. And we would anticipate at least $250,000 in savings on the mobilization fees. We estimate only about $1.5 billion of mobilization fees if we're doing these in annual chunks. So that 250 would be a pretty dramatic savings, provided with the interest on the cash reserves to be equal or higher with the mortgage interest expense. You make interest expense negligible, if any. And then also, you know, Heather did a great job with the projections. And if you look out where on the general fund, we'll be back to over $6 billion in the 25, 26, in 26, 27 fiscal years. You know, I read some math that if we go ahead and prepay $1 million and it just kept the payments going, this loan would be paid off in five and a half years with a total interest expense of $342,623. And what we didn't calculate in here is the savings on materials and labor by getting it all done today versus spreading it out over the next three to four years. So it puts more... You guys have copies of the actual term sheets and the amortization schedules, so I'll be open to questions.
Counsel.
Yeah, I think that was great. I think there'll be an added benefit as well. My guess would be that because this is a larger project, and I know we can't really necessarily put a number to that, but we'll probably have larger firms bid on these projects that will probably bid better pricing, more competition. I think that's going to be an addition. I realize we can't really put a number to that, but I think we're going to see that benefit as well.
Others?
Are we going to be building multiple streets at one time? If we're saving on mobilization sets?
So we still figure this project is going to take place in about 120 days, maybe 150 based on the size. But we still imagine that they're going to work from one section to the next, so be over multiple streets because when they do the paving and things, they're going to want to bring them into the all ones.
How much money did we get for pennies for Pinellas for undergrounding?
Undergrounding, I don't...
It's like 902... If I remember right, it's like 902,000. Two years, so a billion eight.
A billion eight?
Yeah, that's remaining, but we had a question.
And we have one still coming to it.
So with the budget that we made, once it's all said and done, about three years about, we get to file.
Okay.
What we front it?
So this current budget, the total we got for Penny Ford is $4,123.
Four million total?
Yeah, so this prior year funding up to, before this budget year, was 1.3 million. We got another 930,000 this year, and then we have another 930,000 next year and the following year.
What am I missing here? If we took 2 million of that and put it into our infrastructure, why would we beat a bond?
The penny money?
Yeah.
Penny money has to be used towards undergrounding.
Yes. Well, that's the way we allocate it, but not the way the blueprint for the pennies for Pinellas County. Pennies for Pinellas County emphasized stormwater budgets. That's the first thing they really pushed for. This council, before I sat down, I had started using that money for undergrounding. So...
I think part of it is, just to be clear, is a good portion of that... I'm not going to say half of it, but probably 40% comes from Bellar Shores.
A portion of Bellar Shores. What I'm saying is we're collecting $4 million total, and we're having a deficit. And what really, really scares me is our deficit right now is 2.8. And there's been talk that we're going to use this art money, which is $802,000, to pull that out. So now we're going to be at a 3.6 million or 3.7 million deficit.
No, we didn't say we're forming that out. I don't think that's it.
Well, that's been talked in.
So that's... So the Penny Ford money, that 4 million, that's dedicated completely for undergrounding, but each year we get capital revenue for Penny Ford's money. So that comes in each year. This past year was 170,000. It's not that much.
So I understand it, but I'm just saying, if I was on a council, I objected to this undergrounding. I think stormwater projects are essential to the city. It's right in our strategic plan. It's one of our goals. And to put the city in the hunt, which I'm going to vote for because it needs to be done. But this is how big government starts taking over. Like you just said, we can go with $11 million, and we're still going to be in good. I just hope we have a little bit of foresight in the future when we have money given to us for years before it's supposed to be used.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but the... There is just a small portion of the pennies for Pinellas money that are allocated specifically for mobile water communication. Is that right?
So like I said, last year, we got $170,000 revenue. But if you look at the Penny Ford Project reimbursement program, each year we get 930,000. It's typically has to be some gratification. But that's how the agreement was signed, which would have paid for this project.
That was before all of our time. I mean, it was something that was agreed to years ago. This is not something any of us had any...
And this is every community up and down the beach.
Yeah, yeah.
It isn't just us.
Yeah, yeah, it wasn't agreed on. Anyone that fronts about Boulevard, basically. So just, I have a question because I can't quite put my finger on it. What are we collecting in the stormwater fee? What's the revenue to that?
Apparently, it's like 175.
So annually, 175,000?
Yes, and that was, from what I recall, it's, yeah, 175. The, you know, starting assessment, we wanted to look at it in the future to reassess.
I'm just looking at that compared to the debt service on this.
Now, I think when Heather did the projection, she did over 1% increase on that. Which is not very significant, but just so you know. Let's see, so went from, well, Stormwater went from 175 this year, and she put 176,750 to 178. So there's a small increase that she built in 1%. It's in, I guess, a projection of like, in the next 40 years, we're probably going to raise it somewhat.
Slightly, yeah. Sort of looking at that, I mean, we nearly, you know, it's about 50% of the debt service annually we're collecting stormwater fees.
But historically, the city's funded stormwater projects out of the general fund.
Yeah, I know, and I'm just going. Compared to when we started this stormwater project, the entire budget was 4.5 million dollars. Here we are, how many streets have we got done? And we're still at 3.8 million because of the increase in comps. So, right, so it just makes complete sense. I mean, I don't... It's kind of a no-brainer.
And that's one of the reasons we're here today. We were afraid that this would happen if we didn't do something. I think you did a great job researching this and providing us with all these numbers. We have other questions from the council.
Has all the engineering been done for all these streets? So they're shovel ready?
The master plan was preliminary engineering, so it's still out of design.
Have we ever addressed doing this thing the right way? Because people in council have said, wow, people see their streets ripped up, and then we get a heavy rain, and it's flooding right after the stormwater, the new stormwater pipes have been installed. Have we ever addressed putting catch bases, pumps in with the engineers? Because I would like to bring that in and see what the total cost of that would be. Because if you do it right, you'd probably get rid of a cat two storm here.
So to my knowledge, nothing has been put together as a proposal for an engineer for that idea. I do remember that after the 7th and 8th Street project, you bring it in. So, you know, we could get the numbers.
We still have floods down at 3rd Street and that, when I died, and that.
I don't think we're going to ever fix some of this stuff, but it certainly would make sense that when you talk to engineers, maybe Mr. Banker can get involved and ask these questions.
And every street is going to be a case-by-case situation, but there's certainly nothing wrong with asking while they're... wrong with asking while they're, while they're doing their surveys and planning if it's feasible to put in some type of a collection or a comp system.
I think another benefit that's been identified here is that, you know, Frank said we have some extra monies available. At the end, you know, we can accelerate the repayment five and a half years, so we don't have to wait the full tenure term, which I think is great that that's in there because that's not always in bonds or loans. So it's great that that's there, so that we have some money available instead of paying this baby off. And there's a substantial amount of money that can be saved from an interest standpoint for the city, which is great.
Well, this building is paying over in next year?
No.
Three years? Three years.
Other questions or comments?
Just one quick question. So the 9th Street BMP, does that include, for lack of a better term, the tree streets, the cedar, the palm? I know the resurfacing.
It's resurfacing in the valley curve, it'd be the only stormwater component of those three streets.
Okay. Were there initially identified stormwater issues with those streets?
I have to look back at the progress. 2017, but we did do the dredging of the retention pollen.
Right.
And did assist with the water from some of the storage stands here.
Okay. So that's probably something I think we want to take a look at and just not address their issues, because I have talked with some people there. There are issues with the retention clause of the fact that we don't have a stormwater pipe there where we can actually put the valve system to prevent backflow, things like that. But maybe there is something we can do there to actually put a stormwater pipe there to prevent the backflow from the bank coming into those areas. Something like that, so we can get it by then, like we talked about earlier, we can talk with engineers.
What's next?
So, my goal, if I, you guys are on board, I was a bridge to this conversation.
Yes, just a sidebar. Chris Rowe will be ready to be here on the Capitol meeting, he'll have the documents ready. This rate is good until April 7th. Sorry, that seems like there's a fire grill, but I'm sure rates peel back a little bit, so I'm sure this rate will still be the same if we wanted to, but kind of the way we're fast-tracking this, it's fast-tracked to you all. It's been over six months that we've been working on it, it's taking time to get things done, but, you know, the chamber events will be, Chris will be here, there'll be an approval of the city council meeting, first meeting in April, and they'll have the documents already for you all to sign, and then the bank can fund it later in the week.
All right, well, let's find out, and let's see what the general consensus is, and I'll start with Vice Mayor Shirley.
I say move forward, I completely support.
Mr. Lee, may I say?
I agree.
Mr. Banker, move forward. Mr. Roberts?
Move forward as well.
Ms. Natero?
Yes.
And I also agree, so let's go ahead and get it on the agenda and put it through the next council meeting.
Thank you.
All right, can everyone hear me? I feel like I'm not speaking very loud, and a pollen has gotten in my voice. All right, we are on to item number two, the discussion on truck diesel generator for the community center. This was ultimately agenda by Councilmember Roberts.
Yes, City Manager Greenford and I had a go-up of conversations, and we came to the conclusion, we might be good to go ahead and put this on the workshop agenda. I think Kyle has done a great job in evaluating other opportunities out there. I know initially we had funded, how much was it, Kyle? 250,000?
250,000.
For a new generator. So, I know some of the affiliates out there take a look at other available options. This particular one is a used diesel generator. So Kyle, at this time, I know you've looked into it a lot. How do you feel about this particular option from what you've looked into so far?
I think after the discussion, we were kind of caught up on the fact that we wanted natural gas, but we were looking for a more economical option, and we realized that we can get a fueling company to fuel a diesel generator, and also save on costs with a portable option. I feel like we kind of worked out as best it's going to get, but I think it's much better than what we were looking at, because we budgeted the 250, which at the time, the generator was, you know, somewhere like 220, and then we got that recent source well quote that was, I think, putting up like 280, it climbed way to the...
And this particular used option is the number we've seen so far as well?
Yeah, this is, this is off of, I believe, a source well quote as well, and it worked at 97,000 price point, and that would be, that includes the tank and the trailer, but this, this option would be to hook directly into the connection points that previously tested with the transfer sled. There was one other option that we kind of discussed, at least I did, with the sales, and I believe it was about 132,000, if we were looking to put additional connection points over in the parking lot. The benefits of that, it would give you a couple feet of elevation as opposed to being over here, but, you know, if we're looking at that kind of flooding, I don't know. I mean, we'll just kind of weigh out the situation. It really makes that much of a difference, because we're going, we're not going to heat it for the time period.
Right.
And we'll tote a generator over the other gloves to keep it operable until, you know, the water's down, if we're worried about flooding coming up on the building.
Okay. So this particular generator will provide us complete power to the entire building or portions of the building?
So, it was a, the original design was a 100 kilowatt generator to run, basically, we calculated the power demands for the building. That was a bit of a cushion. This is ADA, which is on the three-phase. So, I mean, I can have our engineer kind of look at it, but this is, this was, we have enough to do the whole building, because, you know, at the height, at the highest demand, summertime, AC's running, everything, you know, we, we were able to calculate that it would be conservative that a 100 kilowatt would run it.
Perfect. And so if the diesel tank is completely full, I know you had got an answer for me on that, how long would that last?
So, the tank itself is 680 liters of diesel, and the, you know, in the features, it says sub-base tank up to 45 hours, but if you calculate the consumption liters per hour, if you're running a full load, which should be the ADA kilowatts? Yeah, you're going to get about 38.5 hours. If you're running at 75%, you're going to get closer to, it's 49.27 hours. So, depending on what you're running at, you're going to get longer. So, you know, if we're in a state where we're just running, you know, we're using this as an EOC, and we're running, you know, the AC on that side, you know, internet connection communications, it's not going to be as much as if we had this, you know, all being in this room when we're full, or using it as some kind of shelter or pod inside the storm.
One thing we may want to pursue, and maybe we've already addressed this, is that the diesel providers out there, I know from past experience, we can make contracts with them, because if we have a catastrophe in the area, oftentimes you can be on the short list, and if we run out of diesel fuel, nobody's able to provide, because there are contracts you can put in place so that we're at the top, and so when we say, hey, we need some fuel, we'll be able to get it. Sometimes you pay a little bit of an additional fee upfront for that, but obviously in an emergency situation, it's worth that. So that may be something to take a look at, just so we're, we're basically guaranteeing...
So you pay a premium for a guarantee?
Right, that if we need diesel fuel, we're at the top of the list or close to the top, so we're going to get that kind of a deal. So that's something we can look into, just to make sure, because obviously the worst-case scenario, we have a catastrophic storm come through, our initial allowance in our tank runs out, and then we say, hey, we need some more diesel, and they're like, sorry, diesel is of no value at that point.
Right.
But there are contracts we could put in place to assist us in that area, I think. So great job on this, because I think this saves the city a lot of money, and I think it's going to provide the solution we need. There's obviously exercising of the diesel generators that we need to do on a weekly basis or a bi-weekly basis to make sure it continues to run, so that we do need it, it's ready to run.
Kyle, is there an option for a larger tank?
I haven't asked that. I'll let you check on it.
Because I don't believe 45 hours is enough protection. Whenever Irma came through, there were places that were down for 10 days without power. Obviously, we're on, we're on the main line, but still, something I would like to look into.
Is this a above ground? Is this an above ground tank, or is it under that?
It's right on the base.
Oh, it's right on the base?
Yeah, it's a 100.
It's a self-contained?
And so, and then the entire apparatus is on a trailer, correct?
There is, you're leading, first of all, how many hours are you running this? About 40, running full water?
No, I mean, no, no.
How many hours?
It's a used generator.
It's a, they, you know, it's got a one-year warranty on it, you can do it for 40 years.
It's a used generator, so 2,000 hours, 1,000 hours, 5,000?
I'll get you fine, I'm not sure.
The only other problem I have is, John Deere is a good piece of equipment, but when you use diesel fuel, and you store diesel fuel, especially in this climate, you get a lot of algae in that tank, and bang, when they get into the filters, you're not going to get nothing with problems.
I might have a supply of them. Might have a supply of those, but anyway, yeah.
Well, you can put all the algae you want, but I've seen, I've seen tanks just fill and get contaminated. But you've got to make this contract on this rig.
Yeah, there's a made a contract, not to do that.
Which should be really, and a lot of these made is hydroxyl tests for algae, and that should be one of our services. There's not the words to start a generator up, run it for five hours, and it goes offline. But, good job.
Any other questions or comments on this?
I think you answered my question about the, you know, has a one-year warranty on it, and I'm assuming it's tied into the quarterly maintenance agreement that I was pretty here, and you said that there's an option to purchase additional maintenance on there?
Yeah.
So, maybe looking at the costs associated with that additional maintenance as well. I don't see it on here, I just see the general for the one year.
I believe it was like a two-year addition, it was about 3,000, and then you get up to five additional years, and then I think those are around 5,000 to 6,000, so it's okay.
Okay, all right, perfect, thank you, that's what I was curious about.
So I have a couple of questions too. If this is mobile, I'm going to assume that it will be, it will sit in place and have a continuous connection to our system, and will have a schedule where it starts on its own and...
Well, part of the thing is, contract will come and we'll start it.
Okay.
And, you know, we're sure it runs and tests it.
Okay.
And then, that's really up to us if we want to keep it, it would be back in that corner over there. I think the last one, they might have kept there most of the time before, but we also could trailer behind the building, you know, if we didn't want it out there all the time.
I think she's wondering, is it going to be an automatic start?
Right.
This thing will have a pigtail, you're going to have to plug in.
Most of the, like, most of the commercial ones I see, they will come on every, whatever, Monday morning at 10 o'clock, and then one turn out, and shots.
I don't, let me check on the A.
I don't think it would.
You have to have a whole integrated circuit.
Well, I think it has to be permanently connected for it to run through its normal charge cycle and all that. Ars comes on, I want to say Ars, Arts, we have one similar to this at the office, and I believe it comes on about three times a week. It fires up, annoys people for a few minutes, and then shuts down, but I get notifications every now and then. And so, it may be something worth looking into, but the question is, is how do you connect it from this building to wherever you want to put it?
You'll have that pigtail.
Right.
We have the cables, we've got it happening, but you got to run it off the whole door and come on.
All right. Now, let's, let's find out what that, are we all in a sort of a deadline right now, a timeline on this hog?
I want to say like, oh, 30 days. So we're pretty much coming up on it again, or you check on whatever happened?
This quote expires 15 days from issue date, the date being January 26th, so...
Outlay of prices included.
And it just, portable was what, is that what you were comparing to, is that your other quote was for a portable generator like this, or was that a generator installed on?
That was on a stand.
And not permanently mounted and attached. And that was natural gas also, correct?
Yes.
Just so we can kind of think about what we're comparing to, you know, that's something to think about. And we have natural gas here in the building right now.
It's, it's an expensive price for convenience, it's a great night and day difference in cost, so that's something else that we should consider. Also, there's always a possibility that something that happens while it's being transported.
I thought, is really staying to higher grounds, would it make sense to have a, you know, kind of like you wear a truck well, ramp, a truck ramp, and ramp it up, and just, you know, keep it elevated on site? And then you start adding costs like that, then, does it make sense to have a portable one? I don't know, I'm just, just thinking it through, and just some of the thoughts that I'm having, so I, I...
And this quote is expired, is that correct? Is that what I just, what I heard?
Yes.
So we have to do a re-quote anyway, and whatever you consider portable, the only option is diesel. I do have one more question. So this building is running on generator power, and people are returning back. Will the doors be opened to the power to come in here and get some relief from the heat here in the day?
Yes.
Will, would we provide drinking water, things like that?
We have the stockpile water, we can get it transported as part of, from the county and from the state. Yeah, we can have it in here, but our intention was to, when we open this back up to run AC and have a cooling pod for residents, we're providing information on inspections, permitting, loans, all that stuff out there for them.
Right, okay. And that's the only, only, that's the only way that I would include something like this would be that it didn't just benefit the office, it has like benefit of... Mr. Roberts?
We had asked about a timeframe, so obviously June 1st is rapidly approaching with the hurricane season, so it would be nice if it's even possible. Do you think it's possible at this point, Kyle, that we could actually have a generator sitting out there prior to June 1st?
Then I got to verify, because when we sell that on the playground?
Right.
And just buy a sheet so that we can check. Having gotten to that point.
Because it would be something that would be nice, if in fact we could have it out there prior to June 1st, to say, if we've done our diligence, if we've got a generator there, and of course, you know, June 1st is the official date for the hurricane season, that doesn't mean a hurricane doesn't come through on May 15th. But that, that might be a good thing to have in place, if we had it there, and let's say June 15th, we had a major hurricane come through and lost power for 10 days, and we had a generator in place to power this building, develop it, and be effective.
Well, considering that this quote is already expired, you're going to have to get a re-quote anyway, and we don't know what the actual cost will be, assuming that the way things are going is probably a 5% or at least than what this quote currently states. I would also, I still would like to... I would also, I still would like the council to have both options to look at, permanently mounted, whatever that is, versus this portable generator. I know that this is much cheaper and I'm not the mood to spend a whole lot of money, but at the same time, we want what's best for this building, this city and our citizens. You're going to have to get a re-quote anyway. I would like to ask you to get both types of quotes that we can look at one, one last time because whether you're getting one or getting two, I'm assuming it'd be about the same timeframe.
Yeah.
Council, Austin?
I agree. I'd like to see it outside. And I know it's unusual to have a council meeting, but can we just maybe have it for the council meeting if you have, if you get it in by then?
I'll try to.
Yeah. Not that we can really discuss much, but at least we have the information and.
Well, we can certainly discuss whatever you might, during the city manager's conference.
Sure.
Okay.
What would the process be? If he comes back with a quote next month, would we have to run this through the public twice to purchase it or can we just purchase that real?
I don't think it requires doing anything but just voting on it during a regular council meeting.
The two reading requirements with ordinance is there'd be no ordinance associated with this as long as it's within the merchting guidelines of the, of the city, as long as...
I didn't know if there was a threshold of, like...
I would of course look to Kyle and work with Kyle and make sure that we've checked that, but ordinarily, there's no statutory requirement of technical areas.
Now, if you're able to get quotes before the meeting, that would be even better. And that way we would have them in our hands and we could look at both and weigh our odds that way. Any other questions or comments on this topic?
There may be somebody, Kyle, with the state of Florida. I don't know what that title would be, but somebody has to be in charge for the state of Florida with regards to all the assets. And, and there are times where they will actually make things like generators available, where they replace them and they'll look upon a smaller city like Bel Air Beach and say, would you guys like to have this? That's a possibility. So the first step obviously would be to find out who their contact person is for the state and they have obviously a tremendous amount of generators out there that they use for their buildings, permanent installations as well as portable generators. So there may be something available out there for somebody like our city that we could actually get.
I don't know about this state, but most states, like where I'm from, Jersey, Pennsylvania, Delaware, they're mostly leased a lot like Catator or whatever like that. So when they're removed, Cat takes them back, Junk Gears takes them back, Comms takes them back and then they go to the market for sale. Are you saying this state has an allocation that they purchased the whole generator outright?
Yeah, I know this with mine, we had quite a few and they would purchase them.
Yeah. So what do they do with that? They just game away or sold?
Sometimes if they were going to upgrade, they would trade in, just like you would have called.
Yeah, right.
But other times, they may just make them available to somebody who may be interested in them.
Anything else? Nope. All right. Well, let's move on to item number three, which goes to increase fines for parking violations once and then by city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Our community service administrator put together this local listing of the fines in the area, so we focused on what the initial parking violation for overtime parking would be, which is, you know, the unpaid meter. And then what the, if there's any additional charges after so many days, they'll lay a charge or whatever. So we compiled it together and just wanted to lay it out so you guys could have a good look at just kind of what the surrounding cities are doing. You know, one thing that jumped out at me is like any insurers, you know, they have a fifty-dollar initial fine and then you can see most of these, most of these municipalities, they double their fines after fifteen days. Some double, but most do. And it's also interesting to note, like, some of the cities have their own police department. They used to district court that's established in court if there's any additional fees.
Okay. So what are you looking for there, Mr. Reifler?
So we did a resolution to raise the rates on meters. I'm looking, because if we were to raise our meter rates, I can keep a thirty-five-dollar ticket, my meal, you may not get people paying the rates.
No, when it's cheaper than paying the meter all day.
It was something that was brought up to consider raising the parking tickets and I wanted to present just what we're looking at before we did so.
Well, let me ask you this. Who's going to enforce this?
Yeah.
Who's, who's going to, I mean, to, right now, it's my understanding that we rarely ever, tickets are rarely ever written for parking. Is that true?
Most states will have written, I don't know, a shift, a month or two, because the majority of the tickets, but we don't. Maybe two, three are shipped.
That's every day?
Most states, yeah.
Okay.
Especially the weekends a little bit, the weekend gives you a little bit more tickets because you just have to buy them.
Is that parking just in this area or do you call that more in the park area?
That would be more in, mainly more in, but Morgan Marina, City Hall, Bay Side.
Okay. And what about parking illegally on the street? How often are our tickets written for that?
I haven't checked that.
Okay. And the reason why I ask is because it happens all the time. And if we're going to, if we're going to raise the rates and we're going to try to enforce this, we don't want to make it cheaper to park in the street illegally. And, and so whatever we do, we probably need to do it citywide, I would think.
That does bring you the question of do we take it? Do we, mostly if it's taken it on the street, it's for someone fishing or something like that. Like I know, for instance, someone got a ticket fishing off of one of the piers that wasn't a city resident, you know, they, not for fishing on the pier, but for parking a car in the street.
Right next to the sign that says, no parking, citywide.
Right. So, yeah, no, you know, but so, you know, do residents, I guess my question is, is it often that residents have a guest and they get, the guests get taken it down? Or, because I don't know if we're opening a can of worms, I agree with you in that jack these rates up because clearly someone's going to, I'd rather pay the thirty-five-dollar fine than worry about paying the meter. I mean, cheaper than parking down in, down in Clearwater Beach, pay the thirty-five-dollar fine.
Exactly. What are you going to do? You're going to pay the ten dollars for three hours or thirty-five dollars for all day?
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
I am thinking that we're the hundred dollar, we're the hundred dollar fine.
Yeah. I just don't want a resident's guest to get a hundred dollar fine. You know, that's what I'm, I'm concerned about, I guess.
Would you say the hundred dollars straight up first?
I think so too.
For, for meter, not feeding the meter, not paying your parking fee and...
I know that's...
Meter, I get that. Just while we can certainly have that discussion, I would just like the opportunity to research our ability to do so. As you look at the, the highest on that chart is seventy-five dollars. The mean, median and mode tend to track closer to thirty to thirty-five. There is some statutory authority as you look at Florida statute, three eighteen dot eighteen and others that might suggest that number needs to track closer to thirty. I would of course, you know, I would look at that. I think that looking at that number, the fact that there is no outlier there in this community suggests most of the communities track towards that statutory language. I'm not telling you, you won't find a community in Florida that finds that high. I don't know if they've been, you know, if they've had legal analysis done and are challenged with it, but I don't, I, I owe it to you as my client to raise it. If we go as high as one hundred, if there is a challenge to be had, you're inviting it. I'm not saying that there certainly is like an opportunity to analyze that a little more closely. It's been, the last I looked at that meaningfully was about three years ago. Obviously, a lot happened session to session. I'd like to make sure that that authority is current.
Would you also make a recommendation whenever you come back with those answers?
Absolutely, sir. I, I wouldn't recommend a precise amount, but I'll at least recommend what I think is...
Maybe a suitable range.
Yeah. A range that you may wish to consider, but...
Well, I believe it's seventy-five.
Right. They see, you see they have no late charges.
Yeah. But every other beach community is at least fifty.
Is that, is that the caveat here? You don't have your late charges?
Well, I don't know. I see sixty at Medea.
Within a day to thirty, if they're fourteen days late.
Is that the thing? If you have a late?
Oh, I'm not saying that at all and please understand that when I give advice, advice may not always bind action. I, I would give you advice and you folks can decide for yourselves what you, what you're willing to, to move forward and do. But I, I owe it to you as you're workshopping this stuff to raise. There's a reason, there's likely a reason why you're not seeing that because I'm sure you as legislators and community members are not the only ones who, you know, I, I've said somewhat in jest to some of you in other contexts that anything that's punishable by a fine is legal for a price, right? And so there's that, that notion. And so I understand what you're trying to address, but I, I owe it to you to just make sure that that issue is discussed.
So going back to Vice Mayor Shirley's questions about, okay, I have a guest and now they're getting a hundred dollar ticket for parking in front of my home, I think that that, that situation is a little hard to address. And the reason why is because you never really know what, what situation is going to crop up.
I've never seen it an issue, but I'm asking, do we know how many tickets have been issued in that circumstance?
The deputy will do a warning, they will take a bronchial parking of its repeat offense, but most deputies are, they, they err to the side of education first of a warning.
I think there's also provision that, you know, if you're having a party or something, you can call and say, I'm going to have six people parked on Twenty Second Street in front of my house, you know, they stay on one side of the street. Because I know we've done that for the condos, that there's going to be a huge group, call and say, tell everybody to park on this street. So you can't, you can do it without a ticket, you just have to, shall I say, plan ahead.
I know there's a lot of on-street parking on my street and no one gets ticketed, but I'm just asking because I don't want it to be, to bite us later as being a problem, you know, so and I've never had an issue. I just want to make sure that we're not creating a future problem.
I've never had that problem either, but however, I will add that I have driven down Twenty Second Street many times and there's a car parked illegally right next to the bridge and you can lower your window and even warn them, go in the house for a few minutes, turn around and come back, don't care. They don't care. They're still doing the same thing. These, these, this is what I would like to address because it is a problem. You go to other communities around us, even over in Bel Air and because they allow parking in the street, two cars, one on each side, you could barely get through. And I moved away from that. I moved away from Seminole for that very reason. Well, that's because I like water, but I, that's the last thing I want to see is just more and more cars coming into the community and just parking all over the place. I think maybe the council agrees with me, maybe what we should do, rather than having Randy reply back at us, first off, are we all in agreement that we would like a much higher, much higher fine? And do we have some sort of a cap or am I just, do I sound awful by saying a hundred dollars or a five?
I was going to say two fifty. That would appease the...
Well, and the reason why I'm saying this is because what I'd like to do is, is ask Randy to, to work with city manager Reifler and then he just give us something to vote on whenever we come back. But I want to know if there's, there's a specific cap that we do not want him to go higher than.
I'm going to say we use this guy, no lower than fifty and no higher than seventy-five and then you can add some penalties, you know, after fifteen days like they've done, you know, but, but I think to be, to say, hey, we've done our research and this is what all the surrounding communities are doing and if you look at the beach communities, they're all in that range.
I'm fine with that and I think we can see how it impacts the problem. Go ahead, Mr. Roberts.
Yeah, I just, a couple of quick questions. So let's just take the Marina, for example, Morgan Street. How, how do we identify with the current parking system that we have that somebody has not put enough money in? Could they expire?
Currently, if I walk around with a front vehicle, look in the, on the dash and see a ticket that says the time that they can park.
Okay, so, I'm sorry, tell them right then at, at one fifteen PM, it's done and it's now two o'clock, so they're due a ticket?
Right.
Okay. How much of that, whatever we decide on, how much of that ticket money goes to the city? All the?
All the, I mean, the current system works, which is our own tickets.
Okay. And with the new system that we're getting ready to implement, do we know how easily that's visible to a deputy that they expire with time?
The new system's going to be a lot easier for the deputy because they're going to be able to pull listing of paid plates, a banner to park on, so they'll be able to just cross-track a plate.
Perfect. So they'll have access to the automated system?
Yes.
To say, okay, all seven and nine expired. Perfect. That's great. Okay. And so then they could write them a ticket at that point for, for X amount and, and we're good. Okay.
And we did agree to one hundred percent pull the old meters out, right? Okay.
And the one thing I'll just add for context, and I'm not saying this is across the board in my limited experience from an administrative standpoint, where you see that change in rate past day fifteen is the, if you come and pay it in-house and date within day fifteen, fine, we don't really have a lot of administrative costs added to that. After day fifteen, we're sending it to local ordinance violation court. Now there's administrative charges, they're processing it and you're, you're, one, you're getting less capture on that, but two, there are additional administrative charges associated with that being prosecuted, pursued otherwise or just simply processed off-site.
Is this why they, is this why they have the after fifteen days?
That's, yeah, that's what I'm getting at. That's why some communities have after fifteen days. And that depends on that community, their ability to manage such a process administratively, bureaucratically, however you should describe it, but it's, if you can get to our clerk or somebody or our system, if you have it online by day fifteen, fine, pay the fifty bucks, but then day fifteen, now we're sending it over to the court and they're, they're going to charge us a filing fee and all these things and so, you know, the, the rate changes.
And so...
That's, that's my experience, that's been my experience in other communities. I can't say unequivocally everyone does that.
Well, it's interesting because Clearwater says twenty-three percent added to the total ticket including the late fee. So that's the administrative fee.
We currently don't send it to court, we send it to a collection, a collection collection and send it to the government.
And that's why I said we need to speak to everyone.
Some cities give you a discount if you actually couldn't pay the, the clerk. For example, Kenne City, fifty bucks. You come in directly and pay the city clerk, give us twenty-three, we're good.
Get Randy in the troopers and don't park in the street.
So that's interesting. Randy to troer, same thing.
Exactly.
Don't Monday morning and pay the clerk twenty-three dollars.
And you'll see some of these cities don't actually have meter, so that's their parking fee for other violations.
Okay.
Yeah, I would think that, that just to simplify things, the fine would double after so many days and then stop. And then that way it covers all of the PIA that goes along with having to administer this. Randy, Austin?
No, no further, Mayor.
The doubling at, after fifteen days and then just halting, does that sound reasonable?
That's typically how it operates. There's no, it's not, it doesn't accumulate thereafter. It's not like a daily code enforcement fine that compounds typically. It's flat amount at this point, flat amount at that point and then, you know, and then it's just handled. Either it's ignored or it's made, but it's in.
All right. If everyone agrees, please add something, make it a legit item and give us something to vote on. I think we're determined and we're really cool with it.
Okay. Just as a follow-up for the portable, the contract's been signed and we're supposed to assign a project team. to assign a project team to install, you know, the signage, and give us something running. I'm going to follow that up, let me find out the timelines for that. So currently, we just finished that, filed that resolution, I'm not sure if we signed it tonight for the actual, the year, the rate increase, but depending on the timeline, just because if we're going to raise the rates on the current machines, there's a program, program, programming fee charged, that if, if it's a matter of weeks, you know, don't want to pay.
I understand. Okay, and did you put it in my packet?
Do we have, do we have the resolution for the mayor to sign?
I thought it was already signed, did I miss one?
I have, I'll go get what I have, I have several things in there for you to sign.
For some reason, I thought it was Randy that didn't sign them.
We revised it.
Because the addition of the effective date and the three hours versus no hours limitations was revised to incorporate that, so we need to sign that fast.
All right. Whenever we take a break, which will begin in about twenty minutes, if you don't mind, we'll be kidding, and we'll be signing.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, any other discussion on this before we move on to item number four? All right, item four, discussion of the 12th Street Beach Access. I do not know if we placed this on the agenda.
So I put that on the agenda, and it was my regulation of the council meeting, but after looking back to the audio and listening to what exactly was said, I believe you said that it is, you know, the discussion of, you know, non-residents being on the beach, maybe a discussion, or session in the future, but it wasn't actually, an item that was supposed to put to work session. I know, you said something about the bike rack, I just wanted to update, we ordered a couple of the recycled plastic benches, given that there's three benches already at 12th Street, I'd like to start with just one additional bench, because no other park actually has six benches, so, you know, and I did bring it up in the Parks and Recreation Board meeting, just, you know, because we're doing assessments of the parks, that I wanted them to look at what the amenities were at each park, and, you know, make recommendations as a citywide basis of, of where we need additional benches and such.
As I recall, there was someone asking if we could put bike racks in there, and, but they were also the same residents that were complaining about non-residents using the beach access, so I think we put bike racks in will create the ability for those non-residents to come and park all day at the beach and use up the beach access, so I don't know, there's a conflict in what they're asking for, in my opinion.
I think they were talking, they weren't asking for bike racks, they were complaining that people are chaining their bikes to the benches, and you couldn't sit down.
And couldn't have a bike rack so they could change the bikes?
Yeah, but I think, I think somebody in the council brought up, there's a bike racks there, and there isn't a bike rack there, and I brought up that, you know, all the cars have to have a stick on, but what you just said is, you can stand there on that bridge at ten o'clock in the morning, just watch all the electric bikes come over, and they filter the Sixth Street, 12th Street, and they park there. I've got pictures where they've actually set up tents, like canopies, two bikes, pin the, pin the blanket up, and I took this to Mayor Schmidt, and he goes, that's the least the word promised. He has a sense of humor, but they actually were camping out underneath their, the seawall, they put like two bricks on the seawall with the cover, and draped it over the bikes, and it looks like Hobo Village, but I wouldn't want to see any bike racks there, and I think if you park a bike there, you have to, you should have to have a stick on.
Well, I, yeah, that's, that's almost where we're, where we're ready to go to, because it's another vehicle, and, you know, I don't really know what the solution is. We, we discussed this back whenever it hit the fan over the umbrellas, and COVID was going on, and the only reasonable solution that we could come up with at the time was to issue some sort of tag, that you put on whatever it was you were taking, and said, hey, I live here, and, and that was about all we could come up with. And the bicycles, unfortunately, they're getting more and more powerful, they have longer battery life, and they go fast, and that's why there's a big push not to allow the e-bikes on the beach at all. And it could, it could be that, and we have control over that lot, we can pretty much say whatever we want to on that lot, and we could just say no e-bikes allowed. And then, and then that way, if you come onto the beach, at least you, you've worked up the sweat to get there, instead of flying over, but...
It's a problem being on the sidewalks, I mean, they're riding on sidewalks, you know, it's a real issue.
And all of the, the beach communities, they're having to address this in one way or another, and many of them are, are seriously considering just banning e-bikes all out. I don't know, I don't know what the solution is for Bel Air Beach. I suspect that it won't be long before we start getting the scooters that are all over St. Petersburg and Tampa, where they just litter everywhere, because they have a homing mechanism on them, and crews just ride around and collect them every so often, but they just drop them off wherever, and there's, they don't even have to be responsible for them, they just let them go, walk away, and that's that.
Yeah, my daughter goes to Tanda University, they're all over, they just lay them on the side, they don't even stand on, they just lay them on the sidewalk, trip over.
All it's going to take is, is one of those companies to show up in Indian Rock Beach, and we will have them, we'll have them on our sidewalks, we'll have them on our beach.
So I guess, is there anything for us to do on twelve? I don't know.
Well, I don't know either.
What kind of question might I say right now?
And I was, we just have to decide if there's really anything we can do, and if it is, then we won't go to that extreme, to where, we require stickers for your bike to identify the residents, you know, and non-residents, and then once they get there, what can you do about it? I mean, if there's a bicycle on that lot, what can you do about it?
And I'm not, I don't want to carry a tag to the beach, I mean, we're not New Jersey, we're not doing that. Just sorry.
Carry what?
A tag to the beach, you know, like a lanyard, saying, I'm a resident of the beach.
Yeah, I know, I know, and that's why we didn't move forward, because it just, nobody wanted.
It gets too, it comes too much.
You could put a sticker on the handlebar, or someplace on the bike, on the mini-rim, I mean, and charge the residents a few bucks a year.
Randy?
Sir?
What, what's your thoughts on tagging our bicycles?
I can't say that I've specifically analyzed the issue of tagging bicycles or other multimodal transportation to the beach, you know, I think my bigger, my bigger charge or reminder to each of you is that the beaches are public parks, in, in general, in a general sense, and where communities have implemented measures that were designed to limit public access to parks, they ended up getting sued, they ended up entering into consent judgments with the ACLU or some other entity, where, where you've made it clear, you know, and I'm not suggesting that's what you folks are specifically doing, you're trying to address, you know, nuisance and detritus in your beaches, but where that dialogue starts to push from, we want to do it in a way that we make sure only residents are there, that's where you're going to start to see challenges.
Okay, so, but that's not really, we're at a disadvantage and an advantage with three lots, where there's three lots that are needed access for Bel Air Beach, and my question is, is, because we're already regulating and saying, you can't park here, because you're not a resident.
Yes, sir.
Can we do the same thing with bicycles? You can't bring your bicycle in here unless you're a resident.
I've not specifically analyzed it, is the short answer, the longer answer is, I can see the analogy there, I think from, I think the bigger issue is, as the Vice Mayor has alluded to, the practical elements of that, you know, cars are registered to, to, you know, with the DMV, you know who they go to, if somebody, if I just ride my Schwinn and leave it on the side of the road, and you have to hope that you find me at the same time I'm going back to my bike to know it's mine, versus, you know, anywhere from John, anyone else in John Q. Public, I think that there's, from an administrative standpoint, a harder, more difficult enforcement element.
All right, and then what about nuisance bicycle parking? So they come up to the bench, and they chain their bike to where people should be sitting. Do we have any repercussion on that?
I, I mean, I think we can make it a violation of the code to, you know, adhere your bike to any structure not specifically designed for bike structure, to include but not limited, you know, benches, signposts, et cetera. Again, the issue's going to be, to whom does that citation issue? If, if your deputy's walking the beach and sees one on a bench, and I'm not saying you shouldn't regulate it for this reason, just understand, if your deputy goes there, and, you know, Belinda says, hey deputy, the bench right over here at the Nineteenth Street Access, it's, it's got three bikes on it, okay, I'm going to go over, I mean, do they, do they leave it on, on a sticky? How do, how do we know that it gets there? You know, put it on its own, laminated lanyard, in hopes that the people find it and don't allege that it was, you know, discarded or lost in the weather? I, I would have to, I would also like the opportunity, if we do go down that route, to talk to, whether it's PCSO or other, other units, and see what, if anything, other jurisdictions, we wouldn't be the first one who've had this problem, what solutions have other communities devised, and can we implement them?
How about just a sign on the bench, please, don't chain your bike to the bench?
Yeah, and I think that's, yeah, and, and the same before most communities, and even those communities who have chosen not to regulate smoking on beaches, for example, because of the carve-out for cigars, it, it really relying on a thank you for not smoking, yeah, we're not going to issue you a violation, but, you know, it will get some people, or at least people who just weren't sure, somebody's still going to be like, what do I care? I mean, I was seventeen once, I know how that works, you know, what are you going to say to me? But I think by and large, you get most of the, of the general public captured through that, rather than creating a bureaucracy around enforcement.
Plus, we have enough signs out there, they could chain it to the sign, right? If they normally throw the bike down, they're looking to chain it up, you know? Typically, I would think if you ride your bike and watching the sunset, your bike's going to lean against something, and you're watching the sunset, you leave, I can't imagine someone just leaving their bike there.
I don't, I don't.
My assumption...
Not all actors are rational actors.
And I, I go to the beach often, but I have not witnessed the bikes being chained to the...
I know, I might lean mine against the bench, but I'm not leaning it.
Right. All right, so...
Clarification, though, we're talking about the beach accesses, so do we have, can we put regulations in those beach accesses that are ordinance?
I would have to, I'd have to specifically see what documents we have about that. Again, that was kind of my point on the front end of, if this is intended for public parks and public park access, less likely on the mayor to suggest, there are some lots where maybe the analysis is slightly different. Regardless, once we get to the point where we're, if we get to the point where we're talking about real policy, I would want to make sure that we've made those distinctions, and that's, and those kinds of questions are answered. You know, obviously, a different analysis, right, you know, going on, on the edge of City Hall versus in the sand, on the way up to, you know, in the sandy areas, or edge of the pavement, pavement as you get to where people access beaches, I, you know, that's where you're likely to see bigger problems, for sure.
I think your point is that they're Bel Air shores, the Jacksons.
Oh, if they're property, it's straight up a different, it's not, it's not ours to regulate, I'm, I'm operating on the assumption we're discussing city property, whether we have deep access to property, it's not our property to regulate, just as I might give my neighbor an easement to go over to get to their, the lake, if I ultimately decide to, you know, they, they can't come over and say, I wanted to mow the lawn this way and put these papers, because I'm using your walkway, and it's still my walkway.
Yeah, okay. So at this point, I don't think that we have any action items already to follow up on this item. Are we in agreement? Okay, all right, let's see here, now we're on item number five. This discussion to move council comments immediately following the citizens' comments is placed on the agenda by Councilmember Baker, Mr. Baker.
Yes, well, this actually goes back to number twelve, because the same resident was wondering why, if we could get an answer from the council, it has to wait until council comments at the end of the meeting. This has been brought up a couple of times since I've been on council, because we don't interject with the community, or we don't interject with the residents. So if the residents are really the integral part of this city, then I submitted two resolutions about being able to address citizens' northern citizens' comments, and then we're going to second, I'm heated one of them, but some of the arguments were, well, we can get into a heated debate, everything like that, since we don't debate council comments, why can't we just move this to right after citizens' comments? The council person wants to comment on whatever the citizen said, we can do that? If not, it just, it does, but rather than have these citizens stay here all night long, which a lot of them don't do, and even that's citizen left, I think it should be moved, because I believe, before I was on council, citizens' comments were either the second or last item on the agenda.
They were moved, I believe they were moved to the end of the agenda by Mayor Mansell, and, and that was, I don't know why he did that, and then I did a resolution that passed to where we moved the citizen comments to the beginning, and the reason why I did that was because whenever you make the citizens' way to the very end, there's no one in here. So you were able to pretty much control who spoke, because if you had an agenda, if you were pushing an agenda, you would get your, your people to wait around till the end, or show up, show up towards the end of the meeting, and then keep us here all night long, with the back and forth dialogue. And so I asked to move them back to the beginning, but I was not able to, I couldn't, because I wasn't the chair, I was not able to stop the back and forth, and so the show that was, that was happening at almost every meeting, instead of us sticking around for another hour or two and almost killing each other, it all happened at the beginning of the meeting, before we got to the regular agenda. So, so I made some notes on, on this item, if it's okay, I'll go ahead and, and let you hear my, my thoughts on it. For the sake of meeting efficiency, agenda items take first priority, because each council member has taken the time for careful consideration and preparation, they know what's going to be on the agenda, and so they put a lot of thought into it, and because we approve the agenda, that's the very first thing that happens, we run through the agenda and the order that it's, that it's presented, citizen comments will move to the beginning of the meeting, so they can be heard without being required to stay late. However, these comments are not on the agenda, therefore, if a council member would like to respond, they may do so after the approved agenda. We only moved, we only moved, I only moved the citizen comments to the beginning to give us time to consider what they said, and then towards the end of the meeting, we decided that we want to have differing opinions on whatever the citizen comment was, and we wanted to have a discussion, it would come after, after, after the meeting. As it stands, the way that Mr. Baker is asking, we would have not back and forth conversation with the resident, but it could turn into where we're having a heated debate before we actually get through with our general business and our regular agenda, that we worked so hard to prepare, and it would sort of derail us from meeting. Also, let's see here, I just wrote down, council comments are at the end of the agenda, let's see, specifically to address the, the direction the meeting went, the various agenda items we went over, citizen comments and items they would like to discuss in the future, however, they do not come before our approved agenda, and the reason why is because a council member may want to respond to a way that a certain vote went, okay? Mr. Baker, you have a great example, we do the council comments immediately following the citizen comments, and then later we have, we vote on something that you feel very strongly against, but it passed, well, now you have no, you have no voice... no, you have no voice to speak on that topic. And so that was kind of my general thinking, was I wanna get through our general business first, and then I appreciate the citizens speaking, and I respect each and every one of them. However, I do not want to put their personal, their personal attendance ahead of ours until we have time to think about it, possibly put it on a work session and bring it up for a formal vote if it's something that we feel strongly about. And that's where I stand. I'll take comments from other council members. Yes?
I agree with you totally. I think I put the council comments up to the citizen comments.
Mike, you just addressed some of your points. True, okay? You proved the agenda has, you know, a layout, format, blueprint of what we need to discuss. But two things are on that agenda. Citizens' comments, council comments. So it's always been, to my understanding, and for two years, that I make a comment, other council members can't really comment on my comments. It dies after I get done. True, council can say, "I didn't like what happened," or an ordinance, any type of agenda item. But council has the luxury of always debating that before it goes to a vote. So even if it goes to council comments, or even if council comments are first and they're not last, it still dies anyway. So my comments, or her comments, or anybody's comments, whether you get them out during the debate is up to you. Again, the citizens are the most integral part of this city. Let's answer their questions while they're here. If they're not, then this part will die.
I appreciate your comments. I'll take more. Yes?
I don't think there's ever gonna be a perfect solution to this issue because, you know, Frank, so let's say some people come up with the citizen comments, and so they want an immediate response to get that. If we move that up forward because we want to make it more time-effective for them, there may be people here that are waiting for item number seven on the approved agenda. So now they're delayed. So they're thinking, "Man, listen to this stuff for 30 minutes now, and dinner's cooking," or whatever. So that it's being less time-effective for those people that are waiting for a specific agenda item. You know, I think there may be a way, and I didn't even bring this up, that if we had a special line item in the agenda that wasn't exactly titled "Council Members' Comments", something else that was right after the citizen comments, and we still had the council comments at the end, was something that would be available to just address what the citizens said. But I think we could potentially lose a lot of time there because it would be uncontrollable, potentially. Although it wouldn't be a back-and-forth, each of us would have an opportunity to address what specifically was mentioned in the citizen's comments. And we may say nothing. If we had it right in there, they say, "Okay, is there anything for whatever we wanna call that?" And we could just say, "Look at each other, nothing." Mayor would say, "Nothing." We move on.
And you have that right to understand.
Of course.
Okay, you don't have to address what they bring up. What I'm saying is, there was a woman here who was concerned about her handicapped child. So someone from council could say, "I'm gonna address that with the city manager when he gives his report."
And that'd be the end of it.
And then she could leave, okay? Or someone, there was a time about wire, the benches was, okay, 12th Street. "We'll address that." Hate to keep throwing under the bus, but, "We'll address that with the city manager." I don't, she's not gonna debate me, I'm not gonna debate my comments. All we're gonna do is address the most important people technically. You're giving consideration to the people that like this building.
Actually, I think what you're doing is you're picking and choosing which person. You are setting the agenda whenever you force a response on a citizen.
But what I'm saying is, the free will of addressing it or not addressing it, you know, I'm not saying you have to address, not anybody from council has, my position is not forcing council to address citizen comments, it's giving council the opportunity right after citizen comments.
But it would never be a back-and-forth.
No, just like, just like citizens, just like council comments.
I would like to hear your opinions.
I've served under three mayors, and one mayor in particular allowed comments, and it turned into back-and-forth. The way we're doing things now is very efficient. There are times, I have to say, where I wanna respond to someone. I get that. I mean, it's very difficult, the way we do it now. It's hard to move on when there's a question asked and we can't answer.
Especially whenever they're demanding an answer. But truth is, is that there is a process.
It's very inefficient now.
There is a process that, you know, you could ask the question, you can pick up the phone and call any council member.
Absolutely.
Anytime you want to. You can email, you can whatever. And if you don't get a response, you can really become pesky about it and get a response eventually. But we work very hard to make these meetings run well. And as much as I respect your opinion, I respectfully also disagree.
I appreciate that.
And it's not really the way that I want to run the meetings. Other comments before we take an informal vote on this?
I appreciate where Councilmember Baker wants to acknowledge their comments, and I do appreciate that, what you stated about it's harsh sometimes when they say something. However, at the end of the day, we have to think of everybody's time that's spent, so I'm appreciative of keeping it as we are. And if there's something that we feel we need to address at the end, if they have to leave for whatever reason, the minutes are always available, the video's available, they can always come to us and find out what happened after the fact. So if they bring something to the table and they're not willing to wait until the end, how big of an issue was it really? Or, you know, in the interest of time, if I had something that I really, really heartfelt, well, I'm gonna stick around to the end to see if somebody addresses it.
Well, I'm gonna add something about that I thought of, and I didn't put it in my notes, but many times, a resident, a citizen will come to speak, to address the council, and only one council member knows that he's coming. Okay? So now one council member is prepared, already has an answer ready to go to give this person. However, it may not necessarily represent the views of the majority. And that's been one of my biggest fears, and that's what happened to us in the past, was that there were a few people that were getting attention over and over and over, and it would be, that they were able to steer and control the meeting. And that's the last thing that I want, is for any citizen to come in and hijack the meeting. I do 100% believe that we should at least listen to them and then selectively determine whether it's a, some sort of an issue that needs to be addressed, or if it's not, in one way or the other. Anyone else? Yes?
And I think they brought up a very good point earlier, which was, the citizens make their comments, which is great. And I hear for the first time, and she just brought up again, I may want to respond immediately and not really think it through. So I'll be honest with you, sometimes if somebody asks me something like that, and I'm ready immediately after that to respond to it, as opposed to, by the time it gets to the end of the meeting, I may have thought it through a little bit more and chosen to not actually say anything at all at that point. Or hopefully, what I say at the end of the meeting is a little bit more thought out based on the comments that the citizen made. So sometimes it is a benefit, I know it would be personally, to calm down a little bit based on what somebody may have said, and wait later to talk about it. That's just me.
One of the things that I do, the way that I conduct my meetings, is I use other municipalities and county as an example. We do that in not just the meetings, but we do that with a little bit of everything. Kyle, I'm sure that you've reached out to other municipalities and, "Hey, what do you guys do?" It's always a good practice to, I mean, we're actually watching what's happening with Indian wrong speech right now, to find out what their future holds. And so whenever I look at all the municipalities and I surveyed the mayors on the Big C because I knew that this was coming up, I asked them, "Hey, how do you do it? What do you do?" And pretty much everybody runs it the way that I'm doing this. If the majority of the council would like for me to change it, I will. I will absolutely do that. But I ask each and every one of you to, please allow me to continue because I think we're doing a great job.
Yeah, this isn't any reflection of your job that you're doing, and I think what's starting to go off to what I proposed, the thing again, is you have the priority to address or not address. I mean, if you're a little bit hot-headed to address it, why don't you address it? Okay, you wouldn't wait, or maybe address it the following. I don't think everyone's asking what I'm trying to pull here. All I'm asking is, if council wants to address it right after citizens' comments, it should be addressed.
Thank you. Would that also include if one council member comments on the citizen's comment, then can another council member comment on another council member's comments? You know, I mean, are we opening up a...
Well, not directly. That's what I'm trying to do.
Well, and historically, that's what's happened.
Yes.
Is that whether, you know, you're opening up a debate, the possibility for a debate, and I can assure you right now, if anybody here says something to a citizen that I strongly disagree with, I'm going to interrupt you and say that I disagree. So I don't want that, and I just don't think that it's healthy. So let's do a quick informal vote if there are no more comments about this. You okay with that?
Yeah.
All right. Frank?
I'm for it.
All right. Belinda, no?
I'd like to leave it as we have it.
As we have it?
Leave it as we have it, as is.
Okay. And I feel the same way, so I appreciate everyone's comments, and now let's move on to item number six, also on the agenda by Councilmember Baker, discussion of the normal tree at 804 Harwood Drive.
Yes, going back to the Prinescape services that we did about 10 months ago, 11 months ago, the harvest that came out clearly says in there, re-inspections recommended in one year to moderate any changes. I know there was some follow-up on this, and we reached any type of resolution to the landowner of that, because I think it's under the RLC from what I've researched, about the removal of that tree or anything.
So the Prinescape, the one that the city solicited, I have a date of November 5th.
That was the one, yeah. My board was done in June. No, I'm sorry, that was the other place, the other guy, and probably, are we gonna be doing another survey on that?
My thoughts at the time were, given the intentions brought to the tree, that in a year, we would reassess.
And remove it from the owner of that property?
The owner was agreeable to letting anyone else remove the tree, he just didn't feel like he needed to be responsible for that tree that he considers non-legal.
How about the nuisance ordinances we had? Because I went to the county, I guess it was November or October last year, and the county more or less said, "Well, if you guys can't afford it, we could probably come out and remove it." Their council actually looked up our ordinances and said, I think I emailed you that, I think I emailed our councilman, and then they found out it was Bella Beach, and says, "Well, I don't think you've got money problems." But, so we're not coming out doing anything, but they said, "We believe your nuisance laws clearly showed that trees possibly harm of falling into an easement, into a house, and it should be removed." So I know you're saying that the owner says, "If you wanna cut it down, we'll cut it. Go get it cut down." Have you ever thought about citing him for it?
My opinion was, given the report that I was given, that the city solicited, that it's a slippery slope to enforce this tree as a dangerous tree, because I feel you could go around the stadium planting a lot of trees, and then it'd be a different situation.
All right. So we're gonna go through another hurricane season of standing?
I know, me personally, I own a lot of properties, and someone's tree throws on my property, I have to cut it myself. They're not, and I have one right here in Margo, it's adjacent property to an attorney, and she is not cutting the tree back. I have to do it. And I spend about $5,000 a year keeping this tree trimmed back. So, you know...
Well, it's not the trimming place, Mayor, it's the possible falling of houses.
Well, same, that's the reason I trim it, that's the reason I choose to trim it, is to save my property.
But you go into a property, you trim it or you...
Yes. Because I know she's not going to.
But that's not permitted.
But if he's giving permission, then it would just be a simple phone call to whoever's house, and my, you know, whoever's concerned about it, they could take, make a phone call to the owner and say, "Hey, we'd like to remove the tree, do you mind?" Get a written letter from him, go remove it.
He did say that he would sign the document, I'm prepared.
Now, let me, let's go back a little bit. I thought the last time we had a discussion about this, that you were gonna reach out to the people that surrounded that property and see if they would be interested in funding removal of the tree. I thought that's what we, does that sound familiar?
I remember saying that I would find out if...
I think we were gonna try to get them to pay for it, and then you were going to expedite it if it could happen. If he would allow it and then he wouldn't. I recommended that to some of the neighbors that we just said, and we leaned right to status that we just said. And I think that they, whenever I, you know, did a, just a brief, "Would you be willing to?" I thought that they said that they would, because they all want it gone. And so I think the question is, is if they do agree with that, you said that the homeowner is not, he's not against you removing the tree. Is that right?
Correct.
So what's the difference?
Not to interrupt you, so could we just top it? You know what I'm saying? Kind of have it off? I don't, I don't think that we'd want to...
That's what they did on my street, one of the neighborhood had, a really tall one, I think it might have been.
I just wanna be really clear about the pronouns and antecedents we're using here about like "we" and "us" and "they" and "them." What the manager has discussed is, if the neighbors privately wish to amass some money and arrange for somebody to do it, the property owner has indicated that, I would assume, provided they coordinate with him, that they can do as they well pleased, but he has no intention of doing it. The "we," "us," "them" is not the city at this stage.
Yes.
I just need to make that clear for...
My fault.
No, no, it's fine. It's not a problem.
Basically, we're looking for a liaison, somebody to say, "Do you guys wanna do this?"
And it's about 75 feet, I'd say, so if we not get down to 35 feet, I don't think that violates it.
Well, I'd say you're still going to have a dead tree, though.
Yeah, but if it falls, it falls in the bay of life there.
You still just need to get a letter, I think, and whatever you guys, whatever that group of residents decide, I'm sure you could give them the phone number to reach out to the owner and...
Well, I think they'll carry, it's a little more complicated. I think that the property owner does not like those neighbors. And I think that if the city was doing it, he was okay with it, but does that ring a bell?
Yeah, he's been much more agreeable when I've communicated with him, I'm making sure.
Right.
I think your term about the way, I think it might resonate to him. I think your term about the way, I think it might resonate to me.
Is there a neighbor that he likes?
I wasn't, I wasn't going to go that far, but.
Is there a neighbor that he likes that he could, that he'd react to? I mean.
Well, if.
Because I hate to put, I don't think the city should be able on this.
Right, I think that's what Randy's saying, right? Randy's doing.
Sir, yes, sir.
Can he mediate a letter though, to get this done?
He can do as he wishes. I just, my concern here is.
I don't want to compromise the city, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean, my advice is unless we have a code enforcement action, which at this point, the manager has clearly communicated is not the direction the city's moving in, the city can facilitate by saying, the residents, you know, residents are interested and your neighbors are interested, here's, you know, do you have any objection to me sharing their contact information? Or is there a, you know, a person I can put you in touch with to coordinate or put them in touch with on your back? Maybe if he feels that way, he says, hey, I have a property manager, or I have a lawyer, they can call my lawyer and figure out a time, I don't want to talk to those people. And I'm not putting words in their resident's mouth, I think I'm nothing about that property owner or any of these people, I'm not characterizing anybody. But if he doesn't wish to, much in the same way the residents are somewhat suggesting they would like the city manager facilitating, perhaps he has his own agent or somebody he can put them in touch with and they can have their, you know, third parties talk to one another.
Right.
So.
So maybe Frank, you can ask the neighbor, make that phone call, right?
If I can get going.
I'm a little leery of our commissioner being a neighbor, a council member being a neighbor, I just can't. My, my, my feeling, my, that's just not a full legal thing, it's more of an optics thing. The idea is, oh yeah, it's a neighbor, but they're the council member, the council member has been very vocal on this issue and it's going to feel, it may be characterized as more heavy-handed than just like, oh, my neighbor, I recognize you wear both hats. I just, I do want to sensitize each of those optics.
So.
Why is someone else saying straight?
Frank, you.
I gotta change.
You had this on to the agenda, so obviously you have a, you already have an open dialogue with the residents surrounding this tree.
And you're only one, I think, who dislets, right?
I think there's, I think there's two.
Well, partially dislets. The other one can just look, does it? I'm looking for guidance, you know what I'm saying?
Right. This is one of those, we had a situation, in fact, it was at the end of Vice Mayor's Street with a cul-de-sac, and just went down there and said, hey, you guys come out here and just work it out. And they did, and they, you know, they're not 100% happy, but they're, at least they were able to work something out.
This guy's in Vegas, you know what I'm saying? It's, was it hard for you to get in touch with him?
No.
I got him with an email, we changed it up on the roll. I can imagine. I'm going to run a bite to this and see where we want to go with that. I might be asking you for the email, if that's okay?
This is what I would do if I were you, I would go to those residents that are concerned with the tree and first ask them if they would be willing to work together to pay for the tree removal. And then I would find a non, non-associated resident, someone else, to make the phone call, and then you step away from it. Because it's not a, this is really not a city, as Randy is stating, it's not something we want to get too involved in because we don't want to appear to be pushing someone around.
Understood. I'm just withdrawing this part.
Was that?
I'm just going to withdraw this part from the agenda. I mean, does he vote or anything like that?
Well, we weren't voting on it, but you were just, I said, discussion. It's if there's a problem and this is a work session, we can talk about it. Yes.
If the neighbors who are complaining about it have been told that they can take it down and that the owner says that's okay, and maybe this is a question for Randy or still lawyer and me, can they not complain if the tree falls on their house? You know, if they were told they could cut it down, but they don't, and then it falls on their house?
I'm not going to opine on private property, private property owners' rights or defenses. You know, much in the same way that the commentary has thus far been, this absent code enforcement action, the city doesn't have a role in this. In a lot of these instances, and the mayor's offered other examples where we've asked people to either be good neighbors or work it out themselves, if they have private causes of action, they wish the brain or can render, and I'm not suggesting that there are or not, but that's for them to decide. And in the same vein, if they feel that they are, you know, wading some right defensive power, that's for them to analyze, and I won't opine on it.
Okay. Before we end this, does anyone have any comments on this agenda item? Okay, because what I'm going to do is I'm going to use this as a segue only for the Henrys that came in earlier. I know that they're not here, but they may look at the video. And what I'm going to ask from City Attorney Mooreup is just an update on the situation that you're working on with the tower. Is there anything that you can share with us at this time, or are we still where we were the last time we received an email about it?
So for the benefit of all, and to make sure we're all on the same page, last Monday, I believe it was, I transmitted a, or maybe it was Sunday night, I transmitted a memorandum, it was Monday because I needed to talk to Kyle. I transmitted a memorandum last Monday night to you, I want to say it was in the neighborhood of, I know it was more than 10 pages, I can't remember if it was 20. But it was a lengthy memorandum analyzing, providing the chronology of events as best understood based on staff records and otherwise, providing an analysis of the federal regulatory landscape, the case law interpreting it, the state landscape, the case law or absence thereof interpreting it, and our local ordinances, and then how does that all align with where we stand? And the Cliff Notes version of that for all was, private property owners have rights and we have to reconcile those rights. And this is a, two things can be true, and since we seem to be very comfortable invoking Indian Rock Beach tonight, I will invoke Indian Rock Beach and its debate and discussion on short-term rentals as an example, where certain property owners say, well, what about my rights? I invested in a quiet home on a cul-de-sac, now I live next to a hotel or a motel, and there are some property owners that feel that way. Another property owner say, this has been, this home has been in my family for years, where I recently acquired it and why I acquired it, doesn't matter, it's my property, and I wish to use it in this way that the state law allows me to use. And those feel mutually exclusive, but the law supports both. And we have to find a way to balance those interests as best we can as regulators. And so where the landscape stands presently is while I certainly recognize, sympathize with and understand the articulated concerns about safety, aesthetics, consistency, et cetera, as it relates to the antenna structure operated or that exists at 1058 for amateur antenna radio operation, the law also provides a property owner who wishes to engage in that hobby or operation, as long as it is on an amateur basis, which there's every evidence thus far that that's what's going on, that zoning alone, just simply saying, well, this is a residential area, you can't do it, is not adequate. And the memorandum spoke extensively about the specific fact finding that needs to go into that, the effort to negotiate and reach a reasonable accommodation, which is terminology usually associated with ADA's and of those other type actions, but taking that same paradigm and applying it here, a reasonable accommodation requires you to actually delve into the very fact-specific scenario being proposed here and understand that. And so what was done, the memo concluded with a bulleted list of the kinds of questions that we would seek, and the restatement that the property owner's lawyer and the city attorney, me, both agree that a permit is required for this structure regardless. Obviously, this is not the kind of structure, you permit on a regular basis, the usual paradigms may not fully apply as to how the form, what the form requires, et cetera. And so while there are certain elements that will be required, we need to know where it's going to be and its dimensions, there are some added questions that we've articulated by, I want to say it was by Thursday of last week, I emailed his attorney with communicating those questions and some more, indicating that his administrative contact was manager Reefler, hadn't had a chance to see if he's contacted Mr. Reefler, but thus far not. I was going to ask him tonight and then follow up with his attorney and call tomorrow if that had not happened. I indicated in that email that it would be preferable if they are submitting a permit to do so post haste and preferably in the next 14 days, or at least explain why that may not be a feasible time based on what they need to compile or otherwise, you know, so either do it in this time or at least let us know what time we can reasonably expect and why, so that there is some motion forward. And I communicated that to his supervisor, Baker, that day. And so I do know the Henrys came in and introduced themselves briefly to me and spoke with the mayor. From what I've overheard, there was some concern, is there, is there any possibility that this could exist and that an antenna structure could exist in this neighborhood from a legal standpoint? I'm not saying that it is a done deal. Is there any version of this where this is possible? Yes, there is. Does it have to look like what's there presently? I don't know, because that's part of what this process is, is designed to determine. For example, if this amateur operation requires him to go to X feet and his roof is X feet minus three, is there a reason, help me understand why it's not reasonable to say, affix this to the roof or affix this to some other element on the property? And again, those questions have been posed, we're waiting for those answers, and that's where we stand, working through it. I understand the, just because this is now being addressed in a public meeting and there are public records that have circulated in the form of communications with you, I know I've addressed this with some of you, I had the opportunity to speak with individually. I also want to address the point that this posture is not because of some fear of litigation. My practice regularly involves litigation, frankly, I prefer it to late night meetings. But litigation, because of what I do here, I also know, and because I am a litigator, I know what this looks like on both sides. And I know what it is to litigate on an undeveloped record or on knowing what the case law is and saying, well, you know, pardon the language, damn the torpedoes, we're forging ahead regardless. If I can set you up for a better defensive position, if we even get to a defensive position, that's in better service to the client on a risk management standpoint and as just a general litigator. You know, the other idea that their legal counsel has bullied us, I want to make it clear in the record, as I said in the memo, their legal counsel, while he does have a position that'd be different from some in the community, has been a consummate professional in his dealings with me, we've had candid exchanges, he sent me case law, I sent him case law, and we've discussed our varying points and by and large have reached agreements, at least on what the general overarching legal principles are, what that looks like in execution, it may be different. And again, we're navigating that thus far, there has not been in our exchanges a bunch of posturing or, you know, guerrilla chest beating on, I'm going to, you know, I'm going to crush you and you will see. It's, can we find a solution here? I think we can bring this in for landing, my client needs to make better permitting submissions, absolutely, we're prepared to do that, we just need to know what the city wants so we're not, so the goalpost doesn't keep moving. I'm not alleging, and they haven't accused us of moving goalposts, just let's have shared expectations and get to a finish line. And then determine if something can be reached or not. So that's, I know I've kind of rambled at this point, so I'll stop, but that's where we stand. I'm happy to answer any more targeted questions if you have them.
Well, nine years ago when I moved here, he had an antenna probably about two whistles of his boards there, up on the side of his house.
Yes, sir.
And, but it was very, very flimsy, so it took off in a way, you know what I'm saying, to do minimal damage.
Okay.
Where this is a tower.
Understood.
Which, which has got the neighbors upset because that's, that's going to come, that's going to project, and both of you, and I said this before, both of you guys did a marvelous fabulous job at the hearing in front of the match.
Yes, sir.
And even Mr. Holter noted that his tower was staying at 140, which I got up and said, well, I think, and I was counting, what's it, at 140, so there in itself, it shouldn't be removed. But I understand your whole process, you're dotting the i's, crossing the t's, because if this does go in front of the FCC, federal or whatever, you're going to have to make sure that we gave it every possible doorway to come in. And when we shut it, we shut it because of this.
If we do, yes, sir.
Yes.
And I would submit to you again that while I'm suggesting that there is a possibility and not necessarily a definite probability, I just don't know, because I, it's, I know it's cliched, but I don't know what I don't know yet. I'm waiting for particulars before I could render any opinion. But just because something may be allowed doesn't mean it needs to be allowed in the same manner that it is now. I will say that as a testament to the civil dealings between the parties, his attorney has represented to me, and at this point, I have no evidence to the contrary, that that antenna has not been vertical in 2023 and likely really the last two months of 2022 as well, and would not be going up until we could resolve this so that, so it's not to antagonize the situation or create additional enforcement issues. Mayor, I couldn't help it over here, though I was working on another matter that the Henrys had suggested, that the precise location of the tower may have moved recently, possibly closer to the home, though perhaps still on the side.
Yes.
That may be in direct response to my communication to his attorney, which was consistent with the memorandums. And one of the questions he had was, while we develop a proposal, what is permitted as of right generally? And I said, again, I'm not a building official, I'm not the manager, I can't say, if you do this, it's fine, but looking at our code, one of the elements is the side setback, and it would need to be X amount of feet from the side setback. And so perhaps one, that move, and I don't know this, I've not spoken to his attorney, this is pure speculation, but it seems consistent with the fact that I made this transmission on Thursday, we are here Monday, and it seems to have moved away from the fence and towards the structure. I don't know about footings and concretes and how it was moved and what was moved, but it seems that it's moving away from the setback, again, consistent with the direction we're moving in of achieving compliance, which is what his, what his counsel stated. To be clear, that it is presently on a cranking mechanism, I've heard the residents' concerns, I don't like to qualify them as complaints, so their concerns that, you know, it seems that when he is operating this, he needs the assistance of needs or employees for, whether he needs it or not, the assistance of youth, you know, his teenage grandson friends, people he hires, I don't know, it's sort of besides the point. And there's a concern of, are those people always going to be around when it needs to come down? If there's some kind of exigent circumstance, an unexpected storm or something that requires it's coming down when that time comes. And those are all things that we can address. But presently, it is, it is more akin, in its current configuration, it's really more akin to a utility tower that's sort of attached to a shed or something, not a tower, sorry, a utility ladder or something of the sort. It's a large aluminum structure for sure, that is slightly maybe incrementally above the fence line if you're driving in the front, but it's not teetering over a home or a property line at this stage.
And that's what I've asked the neighbors, is just notify me if you see the tower go up, and then I will notify.
And I do plan to contact his counsel tomorrow. Again, I was waiting to see if there'd been some contact, I just didn't have an opportunity to talk to Kyle today because of my other caseload, but given that I have not yet received an email, and I also have to check my spam because he has an unorthodox email address that sometimes gets routed there, but by tomorrow I'll confirm whether there's, just confirming the receipt of my email if nothing else, but the actions seem to be consistent with that.
So you don't know if he's going to submit one within two weeks from now, because you're not at that point?
I just haven't heard back from him. I, again, to the extent I have any confirmation of the receipt of my email, it appears to be that action, but that's speculation. I would like to talk to him and see where they're at and if they take issue with anything that we, I didn't send him the full memo, though of course it's a public record, I distilled his concerns and addressed those in the email at that time.
Counsel, I would like to apologize, I left for a long period here, but before the break, we're up to general business, but what I'd like to do is take five minutes.
Can I make a quick comment about that, or can we still comment on this?
We can come right back.
Okay.
I just owe everyone a break, and we'll, we'll come right back. Okay, so we were, we were back to Vice Mayor Shirley, she had questions or comments.
Yeah, just a couple of comments regarding the tower. And that is, first, Randy, thank you so much for all the information, it was a lot to digest, but very helpful. We, I was receiving several emails and your email helped clear up some things, and I appreciate that. I want to be aware of property owners' rights and very cautious, non-adversive act with residents reaching out to us. Oftentimes, I want to please the resident that's complaining or reaching out to us with their concerns and not, not really take a step back and look at the overall picture. So I just wanted to caution everyone on that. And when I was thinking about some of the concerns I received from adjacent residents, I also got some comments. I also got some comments from other residents that are adjacent to this property. They had no concerns at all, so there's both sides. But I brought me to think about the sign ordinance that we just approved to place a thirty-five-foot flood pole in people's front yards. And I want to be certain that we have thought that through and we have a permitting process for those flood poles and what our expectations are of them. Because this, to me, is the moment in that flood hole. Just, we forgot, don't need to discuss it right now, but first thing that came to my mind when I looked at this antenna. So, that was all.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, any other discussion on item six before we move on to item seven, non-general business? Go. Item seven, modified city code, section two dash three three five, appeal regarding an appeal of the city manager's decisions to add, must be done in writing and served by certified mail. This was added by Councilmember Baker. Mr. Baker?
Yeah, this actually goes back to number six, or not number six, the tower discussion. And I was talking to our city manager, I was saying, well, how did he appeal this? And he said, well, he sent some email to the city clerk. And I think the city attorney just gave me more ammo because he says he has to check his spam tonight because of certain emails. This poor soul works hard enough. I mean, whether she has to check her spam every day or whatever, I don't, I haven't checked my spam. I don't know about you guys and whatever, but I can't believe we don't have a better system of serving or an appeal when the city manager denies something important. So I'm not exactly a hundred percent sure it should be under section two dash three three five. But he just shook his head, so I know. What I'm saying is, there should be a system that we have, the board or the city, of order of the city manager denies something, there should be a way that it gets appealed in a fashion that we know about. Not that, oh, I sent an email, you know, a month ago or whatever. And they met out your search and your email and some spam accounts actually delete on their own after the fifteen, thirty days or whatever. So I just think it would be a proper way of doing business.
So I understand the, how there was a slight mishap recently and something was overlooked or it wasn't picked up on a timely basis. And I agree with you that we need a better way of doing it. I think, I don't know if it's really certified mail is a requirement because some people just never go to the post office and don't want to deal with that. But I think that we could certainly have, just like we have a permitting process where you have specific forms that you have to complete. We should have an appeal form that you could complete and you submit and you have the city clerk sign off that, hey, I received this. And then you give that person a copy and then therefore now you've got a tracking mechanism. And it's something that, just like every other form we do, I think it's just something that was missing from our collection of documents.
I'm totally agreeing with what you said there. Does that, that sound acceptable rather than changing, changing, well, I think we would still...
You said I was walking anyway, we were...
Yeah, so, yeah, so, so the reason I shook my head in regards to this, appeals appear in your code in a lot of different places and different forms. I do want to be very clear, especially because you've expressed some concern about this in the past, Councilmember Baker, as it relates to appeal of the code enforcement magistrate, code compliance and the special magistrate order, there is a very, there is a very distinct process for that, you know, set forth by statute and otherwise. So notices of appeal for a special magistrate's decision are already dealt with. The appeal as it related to the manager's denial of a permit in this particular context really is, is, comes from your Board of Adjustment code provisions, where it sets the powers and duties, and one of them is under ninety-four sixty-two sub B and C. One of their, pardon, their powers is to hear and decide an appeal from an administrative decision or order made by a city official where there is alleged to be an error in the order or decision in the enforcement of this article. And that's what was really being invoked here. I found an error, or what I believe to be an error in the denial of this permit. And then the next provision in C is the city manager shall receive and process each appeal to the board. And then it goes on to say, you know, within, not talking about days, but just disposition and blah, blah, blah. I think the mayor has touched on something that could be a solution here without the need to go on a first and second reading of shall by, by our street mail. The only thing that I would suggest is, and Kyle and I can work on this, is to the extent there are, you know, whether it's part of a permitting package or other things where we regularly communicate a decision, having right or language, you know, any appeal of this decision shall be submitted on a form to be produced by City Hall or made available at City Hall. And, you know, adding some language to the city website on, if you wish to file appeal, please use this form, disseminating that form in that kind of way so people are aware of its existence and not... I would hate for us to be in a position, and I certainly wouldn't, you know, find it problematic if we said, oh, you didn't find our special secret form, without necessarily making people aware that it exists and how to access it. If, if, you know, I'm speaking without, the manager having added some input on this, I would shake my head about, you know, that was the provision that got from here. There's various appeals referenced in your code. And that was, you know, when we talked about a code review, one of those things that we would want to harmonize if we did get to that point. And I know the manager's got some, some future vision on how, what that might look like. But that's what I wanted to add as far as why I was shaking my head and also what potential solutions might exist, subject of course to administration's input.
Well, I like the way the mayor put it, you know, I don't know why we could just attach it to a denial. You know, when you, the form, this, this form must be filled out. You know, it's just part of the process, is keep it simple as possible. But having noted, you know, this is, needs to be the proper way.
Does that address your concerns?
Being that, you know, there's some parts of administrative appeals discussed in the code, would that hold up though if we just present it in that way with a denial? Or provide the needs or...
Yeah, I mean, it certainly goes beyond what we're, we're doing presently. I don't know, in as much as we're sort of now signaling to people beyond, here's your denial and if you want to appeal it, figure it out, because we don't get legal advice. I don't get legal advice. Someone says, what do I do if I want to challenge it? The code addresses, appeals, managers' decisions, do with it what you wish. And so in that regard, I think it would be sufficient. Again, I would want to make sure that we're checking the notice box of letting people know and that's what we're talking about doing. Again, I wouldn't ring at the wheel. I would look to other communities and say, hey, do any of you have, especially because we serve about a dozen, saying, seeing if anybody has a sample that they use in their communities to, to trigger that. If not, we can develop one, it's not that difficult. I would still submit that, you know, I want to be clear, what we're really talking about here is the notice of the appeal. The, it's, it's not necessarily, you know, they may thereafter have additional items they wish to supplement with and, you know, and that. What we really want to address is, give me the notice, what was the, what was, you know, fields we would want, for example, by whom was the decision issued? Because it's not necessarily only the manager. What was the decision date? What was the content of it? Attach a copy of the decision you seek to, to appeal if it is in writing, et cetera, et cetera.
I'm a bit confused. Is the appeal a decision on a permit request? Is that, I'm confused because that, that, there's a standard permitting process. It's just the process, right? So they didn't like the answer they got from you on something you denied on their permit? So they resubmit? I, I'm not...
In theory, yes, I mean, you can revise and...
I don't know, I'm not, I'm not understanding why there's so much conversation about this appeal and why they're appealing when they just would resubmit and come in and talk to you.
Well, that is, that is a preferred solution at first, but if, if you reach a terminal point where, but I want X, then the city manager's saying, I've read our code, you're not allowed to have X. And I say, well, I read your code and I think you can, I think you're reading it wrong. And we had that situation not just in the context of the antenna structure, but another property where we were talking about, sorry, another property where there was an interpretation relative to what could be built over grade or over the first floor. And we, you know, staff was reading it one way and the applicant or agent were reading it another and said, take it to the board and said, I think your manager's reading your code wrong. I think it's, I think your code is being administered wrong.
Building code needs a lot of attention.
And so, you know, and so, and again, those issues certainly sensitizes to those instances as with the more recent change on the variance, not variance, but the setback in Bellevue Estates. That's an example of where like, oh, we've discovered an issue, we need to address it. But until that issue's addressed, sometimes their only recourse is not to revise. No matter how many times they revise, they're not going to be, if the interpretation is, you can't have this, well, I think I can. And then, you know, so that's why you get appeal. It's not frequent. I mean, maybe I just am a magnet for them, you've had two in my tenure, but outside of that, it's not common. But you do want to make sure if you're having the process that it's administered consistently.
And this is, this is dealing with just the city manager saying, no, the only way you'd ever get this is through a variance.
Or the code changing.
Or a code changing. And then, and then they want to challenge it without going through the variance process. And that's the appeal we're referring to, is that right?
Yes, except to say that, again, the scope of the appeal is they allege that there's an error in the order or a decision in the enforcement of the article. So the basis for the appeal is not just like, I don't like the answer I got, it's I think he's doing it wrong. I think they did the wrong thing. If Kyle opined tomorrow that the only kind of pool somebody could have is an above-ground kiddie pool, someone's like, well, that doesn't seem right. And it's like, well, that's just how I'm reading it, you know? Somebody would go through that kind of process to pick up a certain thing that could get you to a real result.
Okay. Any more comments or questions on this topic?
Just because we're talking about the code and just in my, you know, four months of being city manager, there's a lot of issues, well, I wouldn't say issues, but just questions with the code. And I think it would be beneficial to, to form one of the review committee, at least with our residents. Because I know we talked about like a major overhaul, but that had a monitor, like a price to it. But, you know, in the past five years since I've been here, code review boards have been formed in different areas of code work, selected to be discussed. And there's some points that like, we're gonna look at.
We've done it once on the council and once, I mean, you were on the council the first go around. I was the sideline and the second time we did it together. It's probably, has it been, how long has it been?
I don't know. I thought that, I thought the Henrys had it done, but what's happening is they're focusing on bushes and grass and no one has any construction experience. They're reaching out to residents to read line by line through this code. If we're gonna do it, we need to hire a professional who can help us with construction code and talk about, are we going to put in some architectural design parameters and things like that? You know, we ended up with this, your pool couldn't be higher than the grade of the road, just stupid things that keep getting changed by having the residents do it. And that's, makes absolutely no sense when you have a, you know, your finished pool is at fourteen feet and your pool's at zero. You know, it's just, makes absolutely no sense why those codes have been changed and modified like that. And I think that if we're going to do it, we need to do it right and spend a little money.
I would suggest too, as you talk about that, you may wish to consider the paradigm of having your code of ordinances reviewed one way and your land development code reviewed another. When you treat them as similar, you're right, there's a very big distinction between, do we want to limit the skate park hours from eight to twelve or only allow these, only rollerblades? And like, these are the kinds of legis, I'm not trying to trivialize all the legislative, but those are very distinct from, you know, what grade is and how you're defining, whether you're measuring from the crown of the road or, you know, from BFE and all those kinds. That's hyper-technical where your land development code goes. And also, land development code may, because it's land use, may come with attendant issues of legal impacts of, oh, we're downzoning this or, and I'm not suggesting anybody's trying to propose that, but, you know, land development codes can have more collateral impacts than changing purely legislative regulations on how other parts of the city are administered. So when you talk about code review, there's, most codes are, some part A is your, here are the laws you can break and some part B is, and here's how you get to use your land. And so that is where communities have endeavored to do a code review, sometimes they bifurcate those two.
Okay.
Which I highly recommend.
What's that?
I highly recommend separating these two.
And we've discussed this. I think that we, we kicked it down a little bit just because we wanted these two settle down and deal with the immediate problems. And we go back and we focus on that. And what I recommend is, it's pretty much in alignment with Randy, is that we, we tackle sections, not the whole thing. We, we just focus on a couple of areas and knock it out, perfect it, make sure that it doesn't impact other areas. And then just a little along instead of all at once. I think that it's probably too much to digest if we do it all at one time. Thoughts?
Do you want me to start looking at, through the county, is there any consultation or, you know, assistance they can provide or rather than going private? We're talking land use codes, construction codes. Maybe just some options, because she does bring up this point that, you know, the average resident does not have very much experience in the language of those codes.
You're right about that. We're great at, at changing rules about shrubs and pages and...
The entire code review was every meeting about, is it a bush or is it grass? Or is it a tree or is it? And I'm like, oh my gosh. How about the League of Cities to see if they have, you know, someone who can assist us with the, the construction, layman ultimate code? Start there and then if not, then I might have some resources.
There are some, I do have some, just with my experience as a floodplain administrator for the League of City, some parts of the flood code I'd like to have considered. So there are other parts.
Okay.
So, Kyle, I believe in that fashion that the CAC could operate in that way as a code review board, because it's not about land development or...
Am I incorrect in that flood, flood code?
Flood code is in your land development code, I believe. And you would have to, you know, on top of any consistency determination with your comp plan, you know, we definitely would want the planner reviewing for consistency with county elements and all of that.
And I'd like to add some feedback to on the flood. When you're, if you're looking at flood, you know, there's some things we could do on the lots that front water, that are waterfront, add some code compliance that's not there, that new development's not doing, that they could manage the runoff from their prompting and their roof line out right out to the, you know, intercoastal rather than onto our streets that we're still managing on the streets and...
Or in their pools.
Yeah, and no one, I mean, it's a very easy thing to do during construction, but it's not in our code. And so we're not, no one does it because it costs a few bucks.
Right. And I think Mike Kelly had mentioned that there were, there was definitely something out of the pool, could have, I didn't quite understand it, but...
Eighteen inches above the foundation of the concrete. So, yeah, so right now where we're at, we're doing the comprehensive plan, it'll be planning is on the board, so we have to get through that.
All right.
After that, it'll be the sign ordinance, so then I guess after that.
All right, any other comments on Vice Mayor Shirley's comment? What's the plan and the tack on this? Obviously, we're waiting for this one phase to finish and then what's, what's next after that?
Let's see, we talked about the comp plan?
Yes.
Okay, so right now we're working on the advertising. Do you have the dates that I cannot remember?
No, I don't have them.
So, we're drafting the...
The advertising and the ordinance, yep.
Okay. So as soon as that is done, then it'll serve as our public hearing for recommending early approval from the land development board.
Okay.
And then it will come to you guys.
All right. And then, well, any other questions or on that at all or can we move on to general business? Everybody good with that? Okay. Okay. Before I start, does anyone have any general business they would like to discuss? Nope? Okay. So I've been thinking about many things. And first, I want to say, I don't want this, I don't use it. I, I can't make myself learn what I'm at. I just, I'm great with computers, but this is not what I want to do for the next few years. So I'm gratefully returning it and I don't know what we're gonna do with it, but I look and I don't see anyone else.
I use mine.
Are you using yours?
Yes, I don't, I don't, I need city business on any of my devices. It goes right here.
Okay, all right. Well, I, I just use mine for email and I'll, you know, construct a document or something, but everything's being archived and Patty can retrieve it if we ever get any records requests. But I just, I have no use for it. And I like the fact that we have all of these documents. In fact, I purposely did not pick up my packet and I wanted to see how I can do on my laptop and it actually worked out well. I write notes on this and I view the document here and I'm okay with that. That being said, how many of these have been turned in already?
I think it'd be a third.
Okay. Do we, should we liquidate them? Does the staff have these for them? I don't know.
The good news is, is they were paid for from the Department of Justice for that for code. So it was, the idea is I sold it, we could use it if we ever were in a situation again that we had to be mobile or at home, we can hold meetings using the license.
Okay. Well, is it all right if I store mine here then?
Sure.
Okay, great. Aren't we supposed to go paperless and Windows ninety-five when they enter? Yeah, I hear you. Okay, so the next thing that I want to bring up, I'm trying not to keep everybody too late. I still owe, I still owe you guys a Marina Plan. And we haven't done it. I, I have told Kyle that I was gonna get with him, I just have not had time. And then, of course, we had the situation, family, and I appreciate everyone reaching out and sending their condolences. I'll get there, okay? And we will have this conversation and we'll give you something to look at and debate over. The next thing is, as you know, I'm on the Big C and what, I also attend the mayor's council of Canales County meetings and there's other councils, committees and whatever that I could be involved in. What I have discovered, and this is probably on me, was whenever times were hard and we weren't very happy, we, we voted to do term limits. And before I go any further, I am not asking for term limits to be changed for me, but I am asking this council to consider adding a term to whoever is next. And the reason why is because all of the mayor's council of Canales County, Big C, some of those leading cities, I believe, is in the same shape, is that I can't serve as an officer. And they want, they want me to be one of them and I can't do it. And so what, what happens is, I really don't have as much influence on other communities and the county as I would if I were able to serve as an officer. And unfortunately, whenever you're a two-term, I think the city's probably learned that there's probably not gonna be many surprises. This community is probably going to watch and, and watch somebody serve on the council before they elect a mayor, unless it's somebody that's already served and then they come back in. But in my case, I served on the council, now I'm the mayor, but I'm not eligible for anything outside of right here because they all know that I'm terming out at the end of this term. And so I'm not asking for any action items or anything tonight, but I'm asking for all of you to kind of consider this situation and are we doing the very best for our community that we can? Because what I see is that other communities are having more influence over, over the whole area, whereas we're not really considered anything because of our size and also because I can't serve on, as an officer. And that's how you make changes. So something to consider, I know that it would have to be on, you know, it would have to be on ballot during the election to change our charter again. Another, something else that, that, speaking of elections and our charter and the way that we handle things, I know that we're on this three-year thing. And I'm beginning to wonder if it's too expensive, if we would save money if we just ran our elections with the general elections rather than this oddball, you know, in March in one year and then like maybe if we had four-year terms instead of three-year terms and we, we had an election every two years, one during the regular general election and then we had one during the midterms and we just piggybacked off of that to save money. Just again, things that I've been thinking about now that I know what I know. And, and that's really about it. Yes?
I have always thought personally that term limits were a good thing. And I always was thinking that on the federal government level, when you see people that are in those positions for eternity, that they're, and for some reason they keep being reelected and it almost looks like they're not sure what they're doing and just saying. I think at a, at a city level, and I heard this guy on the radio, just driving home one day, and he said, I used to be for term limits, now it doesn't make any sense to me because clearly if somebody's not doing the job properly, you vote them out. It's not difficult to do that. So my, I just pegged over to the other side. I am one hundred percent against term limits. I've had more than a few citizens talk to me specifically about this issue, so I should have brought it up. I forgot. I think, I guess my first question is, when do we, if we want to change the charter, how ahead of time do we have to submit whatever we need to submit to make it go for a vote? Does anybody know that? Answer it.
I can't tell you a precise deadline as it varies by election. It's usually a good, my recollection, the last time I did so, it was like for a March election, it was like December fifteenth.
Oh, that's a good point.
You know, in terms of getting information out. And before that December fifteenth, we have to have had a vote on the ordinance, it's been in the form of ordinance and resolution on do we have this? And then if we do have it, what is the ballot language read? So there's definitely lead time.
Right.
It's not something you decide, you know, a month or two before the election, but you do, it's also not a year out either.
Right. So I just wanted to comment, I agree with you a hundred percent. I think it, I think it just makes sense. And I think clearly at a city level, if somebody's not doing the job that the citizens feel that person's doing and they run again, they're not gonna win. It's that simple.
I disagree with that.
Why is that?
Well, as Nancy Pelosi, who's one of my mistakes, said, when AOC was elected, if you put a glass of water on the ballot in that district, it would get elected. And the populace isn't in tune. They don't, look at the numbers coming to the polls, less than forty percent, sometimes twenty percent. There's enough people to serve and I think there should be a refreshing of a cabinet, a council, a congress, of a senate every few years. I was totally against term limits. I felt exactly what you did twenty years ago, but how the hell can that personally, Nancy Pelosi stay in office as many years?
Well, how can people like Joe Biden, who's never done a thing?
What I'm saying, it's federal, but it's the same thing. Government starts at the local lowest level, okay? And then it resumes. That's why we're so concerned about going into a binding issue. Are we getting into the big government by now? You know, going there. I think there's, I think everybody in Bel Air Beach should have to serve on council for one term. It should be like, it should be like furniture.
Or after work, HCU, maybe military-style rifle. Or a matriarch.
It's like furniture. Okay, there's patterns, they don't understand what I'm talking about.
My understanding is historically, there was a time when this city could hardly even get anybody.
Right.
To fill a position. So somebody would be in that position and they wanted out and they were told, somebody tapped on the shoulder, say, you know, nobody's signing up for this. Would you do it another term? So I don't think there's enough people here that really want to do it.
Well, that's, but that's my point. And there's not enough people to go to the polls. So you have to get people involved.
I think the last time there were a lot of people going to the polls.
Yeah, and look at the time before that, the time before that, the time before that, and yeah. There was a lot of influx of money last time too.
I see, I see both sides. I mean, I definitely do, because when you're new on council, it probably takes you a year to year up, right? So there's a big learning curve.
True.
And so I, I, so you lose a lot of time in the beginning. I also, I just had this conversation with my son-in-law today, we were talking about term limits and I'm in support of it, but not, I think we've limited it too short. I think with this last review, we did, you know, it was when we voted in term limits and the last charter review. And I think two terms seem like a good idea, but I think if you serve on council, I mean, you're a mayor's position and that changes things, I, the learning curve's not accounted for, just some things that, you know, maybe we should take a look at it, is all I'm saying. I'm not, I'm not sure how I feel about it, but I see both sides, right? Because what happens in six years, you know, you're on council for six years, Leslie, and no one steps up to take your spot. We can't get that chair filled. I mean, I don't know what's, I really don't know what's gonna happen in that election when we can't fill the chair.
But how many, when Mr. Dunn left, how many people applied to sit on council? We had, what, four?
But they didn't have to run an election. That was a little different. I mean, you gotta run an election.
They still stepped up to serve, you know, and I think you, I don't know. So this is kind of my take on it is that, all right, if, let's just say you're serving on the council, all right, and it's your first time, you're, you're going to be on the council with some people that have already been on there for at least a year or two, all right? And so you have to start building a relationship with them. Well, then, you run for mayor later and it starts all over again. You don't know what you're doing whenever you are now going out, because you understand how this council works, but you don't understand how everything else works. And so you go out there and Leslie can testify to this because she's done it. You start building relationships and you start figuring out how people work and how they operate. And, and once you establish those relationships, you have more power to, to benefit your community than you do just by yourself. And so, I mean, something that I would seriously like everyone to consider, what I will say is that if we decide to do this, I would like to make sure that I am not eligible, that it would be, this new, the charter would go into effect as I left. And because it's only, it's the right thing to do. Wouldn't that impact every body right now, city term, since they were all elected under someone on the board?
Short answer, you'd have to look at the language. I, I was insensitized that we'd be having this discussion that way. We would have to look at that language and of course, when you're drafting charter amendments, you're legislating and we can write it how we want to write it, based, and ultimately what, you know, if you seek to have it approved, what you think would be more favorable that way as well. But not necessarily, we would just, it would in part be how we structure it and what we're looking at. I'm not intimately familiar with beyond the third term limitation, what your term limiting language custom looks like.
Okay.
But I didn't even think that what you brought up earlier, which was the inability of somebody who's in their final term is highly unlikely to be elected for a position within the county, an officer position.
Don't say within the county, just say as an officer within, because I don't want anyone to think that...
Oh, no, no, no.
You know what I'm saying.
So, but there's limitations there, it's just human nature. You know, when people are making a recommendation for somebody to take on an officer.
Well, only your treasurer, then your secretary, and then the chair or the president. And at one or two-year terms, I would not be eligible at all. And so, and not only that, but they didn't know who I was when I first started. So really, a second term would be the only way to, for Bel Air Beach to be fairly represented out, throughout the county on these various committees. Would you agree with that, Leslie?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I know that the mayor's lunch that I went to, there were some county commissioners there and they, they're a big contact for us. I mean, but again, you've got to, if you're just, you're in and you don't know what you don't know, you've got to, it takes time to figure out your footing and what you're doing, yeah.
Yeah, and I will add that, that the extra year, because if you remember, I was put on the Big C the year before this term began. It actually did give me a leg up, whereas someone new coming in, a new mayor, they don't know anyone. And so it actually bought me an extra year and we made quite a bit of progress. So just something to think about. And I know that the, the size of the term also could possibly be impacted if you wanted to run elections during a regular election rather than the, I don't know what the implications would be for Patty, but not bad then.
And Mayor, I haven't looked at all the bills filed this session. I know that the last two sessions, the legislature has tried to compel all municipalities to conform that way. So, and again, I'm not suggesting that will happen this session, but we always have that added fun element of how we'll reconcile that if that fiat should come down from Tallahassee.
And these are the same people that are wanting to bring in partisan, partisanship, which we're totally ready.
Enhanced financial disclosures and they're all, this is going to be a very interesting session for municipalities and you'll be getting memoranda from me shortly on where the bills are standing now that we're about two and three weeks into session.
Yep. Okay, and I think that that was all I had of it. Kyle, when do we begin the official budget season?
The end of this month, I turn to Heather, our, what, the budget that I've prepared and she kind of puts it all together. Believe, I'll check the calendar, I don't have it on here right now, but I believe the start of May.
Okay.
That I'm gonna issue that to you and start all the meetings individually.
Okay, great. And this is it, then everybody can go on. I keep promising you updates on the beach nourishment and what's going on with it. I met with Kelly Levy, who is in, in charge of, I look worse for it. Okay, so I spoke to her and I had a long meeting with her and I had Pat and Bill with me and...
This is Canales County?
Yes. She is on board with the county funding, fully funding the project if we don't get a positive answer from, from the Army Corps of Engineers and various people in DC.
So when is that deadline? Isn't that approaching or hasn't that...
There's, there's no deadline.
Because they start moving that again.
We're, we're not even fighting for a deadline right now. We're fighting just to ever get it again, okay? And so we're already two years out because there's been no plans, all right? So we're gonna have to go through at least two more storm seasons before we see...
So you're saying there's nothing going on?
There's nothing going on on Saint Paul San Key Island.
Because people keep saying, is it going to happen?
It's not going to happen.
I keep saying, slimmed and...
No, it's not going to happen. So, because again, they've not even, they've not even begun planning for the project. So, I, I have been meeting with all of the, the county commissioners and one by one, in fact, tomorrow, we're taking Chris Labala to lunch and meeting with him and showing him how little beach there is down in North Ragton Beach. And trying to make sure that one by one that they're all, they're all buying in. And so, whenever we're finally told, hell no, you're not getting any of our money and the Army Corps of Engineers is not going to help, I'm working diligently to get a firm commitment from the county, from Pinellas County, that they will one hundred percent fund this project because we have the money. They have thirty-five million dollars right now waiting to do something with it concerning the beach nourishment. And, and that's our money. We, whether we like it or not, use Airbnbs and, and all this traffic and everything that's going on.
Taxes, they collect a lot too.
We, we sacrifice for that money and...
If we get that thirty-five million or whatever percentage, the state always kicked in another twenty percent.
I don't think that they will, I don't believe that they will commit to anything unless the Army Corps has approved it.
So, this is going to be all private?
This will be all Pinellas County doing it, but we do have the money and the way that I'm approaching this, and when I say we, not us, the way that I'm approaching this is you're reinvesting and you're getting ready to spend millions and millions on these baseball complexes and new stadiums and all this, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars, what do you think God's going to hear? It surely wasn't the middle of the, of our peninsula, it was the beaches. And so, reinvest and put it back and, and let's keep doing it. And, and so, I'll let you know after, at our next meeting, I'll let you know how it goes or I'll contact you and send an email that says that you can share this with the council.
You can take it down to sister tomorrow, I'll make a few of those jelly sandwiches for lunch and see how, if there's no beach left there.
Yeah, I know. All right, that's all I've got. Last chance to say anything else for this meeting, otherwise I'm going to have some motion.
Motion.
For German. Second, anyone have a second? All right, all in favor? All right. Thanks for being so patient and great meeting.